Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into children and young people with disability in New South Wales educational settings. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians, on the lands on which we're meeting today, and I pay my respects to elders past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Abigail Boyd, and I am chair of this committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence that they give today, however, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Please also note that Auslan interpreters will be interpreting at this hearing and shown on the live broadcast. I ask members and witnesses to please make sure that you speak clearly into the microphone and wait until the previous speaker has finished talking. I now welcome our first witnesses. Welcome and thank you very much for making time to give evidence today to the committee. If I could ask each of you, starting from my left, to please state your name and position title, and then swear either an oath or an affirmation.
My name is Carrie Evelyn Pearson. I am the acting solicitor in charge of the Newcastle Family and Civil Law Office of Legal Aid New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Pearson.
My name is Meredith Hager. I am a principal solicitor in the General Practice at Youth Law Australia, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Hager.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Belza. I'm a solicitor at the Australian Centre for Disability Law, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Ms Belza.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Abdu. I'm a solicitor at the Australian Centre for Disability Law. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms Abdu. So I'm going to invite each of you or each organisation to make a short opening statement, and I'll start with you, Ms Pearson.
I would also like to start by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land, the Gadigal people, and pay my respects to elders past and present, and extend those respects to all First Nations people joining today, and I thank the committee for the opportunity to appear today. As stated in our submission, Legal Aid New South Wales assists many children and their parents, guardians, and carers with legal matters. Our Criminal Law Division provides specialised advice and representation to children involved in criminal cases in the Children's Court of New South Wales. Our Family Law Division provides specialist advice and representation for children in care and protection and education cases before the Children's Court. And our Children's Civil Law Service provides a targeted and holistic legal service to children identified as having complex needs, particularly those in out-of-home care. I thought I would also give some context around my experiences with children and young people with disabilities in the educational settings. I started with Legal Aid New South Wales as a solicitor in 2017. Since then, I have predominantly practised in the family litigation team in Newcastle, and I am currently acting as the solicitor in charge of the Newcastle Family and Civil Law Office. I'm an independent children's lawyer and a children's representative for care and protection cases in the Children's Court of New South Wales. I have acted for both parents and children in applications by the Department of Education for compulsory schooling orders, and I have also supervised other lawyers in representing mainly parents in compulsory schooling order cases.
Thank you, Ms Hager.
Thank you. I would also like to extend my deepest respects to any Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people here today, and also acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we're appearing. Youth Law Australia is a national community legal centre for children and young people. We aim to help any young person with just about any legal problem, no matter where they live in Australia. Legal issues connected with the right to education are an important area of our work. Our submission contains five recommendations. First, on the provision of adjustments and support, which is critical to the experiences of students with disability at school. We submit that the New South Wales anti-discrimination legislation should include a standalone duty to make adjustments on educational authorities. There also needs to be a clear pathway by which students and their parents or carers can seek timely review of decisions about reasonable adjustments, access specialist support, and referrals to advocacy. Consideration could be given to creating a senior and specialist position within the department with authority to make decisions in individual cases and to drive systemic improvement. Students with disability are significantly overrepresented in the use of exclusionary discipline. We've seen the use of exclusionary discipline against students with disability who are very young, sometimes as young as five years old. Exclusionary discipline can have serious impacts on students with disability. Decades of empirical evidence has found that, among other things, it doesn't provide students with the support needed to achieve behavioural change, it reinforces behaviours that it's meant to extinguish, it doesn't improve safety, and it actively contributes to disengagement with the education system. In our submission, we recommended a review of the New South Wales suspension and expulsion procedures, including provisions for automatic departmental oversight where a student is suspended more than once or for a particular number of days. At the moment, the system is in many respects reactive, and it puts a significant burden on students with disability and their parents and carers. This is a particular problem, given no legal remedy can replace or properly compensate a student for the loss of their education. We'd like to add two additional recommendations for the committee to consider. First, we support the Disability Royal Commission's recommendation for a positive duty to eliminate disability discrimination in education. Second, we submit that advocacy and legal advocacy is critical for ensuring that the rights of students with disability are maximised in education. These services should be funded and information about them made available to students with disability and their advocates as early as possible in their educational journey. Law doesn't have all the answers to the barriers students with disability experience at school, but in New South Wales there is significant scope for legal frameworks, policies, and procedures to be reformed to become important drivers for a more inclusive education system. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it you, Ms Belza?
Yes, I'll give our opening statement. I'd like to thank the chair and members of the inquiry for inviting ACDL to give evidence today. My colleague Sarah and I are delighted to be here. Just by way of background, ACDL is a community legal centre which specialises in providing free advice and representation services to people with disability who've experienced discrimination. We primarily advise clients on their rights under the Disability Discrimination Act, the federal legislation, and Part 4A of the Anti-Discrimination Act, being the New South Wales legislation. By way of background, ACDL receives funding from state and federal government and the New South Wales Public Purpose Fund, as well as project-specific funding from time to time. In the 2022 to 2023 financial year, we provided 165 advices relating to disability discrimination in education, and that's about 35% of the advices that we provided. And in the same period, we undertook 105 representation services in education matters, just over half of our representation services. So you can see that education matters make up a large portion of our work, generally split equally across public and private schools. The key areas that we wish to advocate for change can be grouped into two categories. Firstly, into the relationship between children and young people, their parents, and the school, and secondly, in amendments to the New South Wales legislation and the operation of anti-discrimination in New South Wales. To expand on these two categories very briefly, we would love to see parents in New South Wales better equipped with information about the rights of students with disability and with tools to assist their communication to schools. Effective education is only achieved when there is a strong and positive relationship between the school, the student, and their family. And so equipping parents with that knowledge and those tools will achieve the best outcomes for students in their education. Further, better equipping schools with guidance as to their responsibilities and how to effectively implement adjustments will see a significant change to students' education outcomes and participation, both in the school community and post-school life. In relation to the second category, we recommend firstly that the New South Wales legislation is amended to include a positive obligation to consult and to make reasonable adjustments for a student with disability. Secondly, that changes are made to reduce processing times for complaints at AD New South Wales. And finally, that AD New South Wales be granted power to make binding decisions in education matters. To conclude, if appropriate, I wanted to invite the committee, if they wish, to ask further questions in relation to some of our recent experiences with clients, who've seen really great integration into mainstream education, and the benefits that this provides, not just to them and their families, but to the whole school community, their peers, teachers. These positive examples could provide a bright spot in what can sometimes be a challenging and depressing landscape. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just to let you know, the committee will be asking questions in a sort of free-flow manner, so we will sort of take it in turns and share it around. I'll start, I've just got a couple of initial questions to set the scene, I guess. So taking you up, Ms Belza, on that offer, I think it would be really useful if you could give us some real-life examples of the difference that adequate supports can make to children with disability.
Thank you. I would love that. And these are both, these are all really concrete examples of things that I've seen just in the past two to three weeks. They're not in our submission for that reason, but I thought they're really positive ways to show how schools can make a real difference. The first person is a mother I spoke with just yesterday, and she's got a child aged 14, they're living in the Tweedheads region, attending a private school. And she really asked me to speak about the huge benefits that she's noticed, not just for her son, but for the whole family, as a result of their son attending a mainstream school. She said to me, and I quote, "As a community, we have people from all walks of life, backgrounds, and abilities in our society, and schools should be like that as well. The benefit for my son is he learns to be a confident member of our community in a safe school environment, but the benefits extend to his peers and teachers as well. They develop skills and confidence in building friendships with someone who appears a little different to them, and are also better prepared to succeed in a post-school environment." She gave me this beautiful example where her son was supported by the school to attend camp. They had initially been reluctant, but they put in adjustments in place so that he could attend an overnight camp. On that camp, he really bonded with a particular teacher, which was excellent. Now, come past what, a few weeks, he was at school and his class, he's in year seven, they were participating in PE, they were doing soccer, he couldn't participate in that. The teacher who he'd bonded with was leading a year-nine group in African dance. My initial comment to her was that I thought that was an ambitious target for year-nine students, to get them to participate. But her son, seeing this teacher who he'd connected with, went over and said, "Can I join in? I love dancing." He started dancing, and suddenly the whole year-nine cohort joined in, and it became this incredibly joyful, free-flowing example of how bringing, including people with disabilities in life can make a real difference. And I've actually seen a video, and it's just beautiful. Another example I wanted to give was a client I was speaking with a few weeks ago at a private school in a Sydney with a daughter in primary school, and the school had taken great lengths to ensure that her daughter could participate in a swimming carnival. She said that it brought her to tears watching the whole cohort, and particularly her daughter's year group, you know, cheering so loudly for her daughter to swim. But she said even more than that, she had parents coming up to her afterwards saying, "Watching for my child, a child without a disability, watching your daughter participate has encouraged them to participate, even though they equally don't like swimming, they equally find it scary to participate in a race." And I just thought that really drives home the fact that that benefit is not just to the child and their family, but to their whole peer group and their cohort. Two other really quick examples, if I may. A client about two or three weeks ago, I was speaking with, had a child in senior school who has regular seizures, and had had a seizure at school, in classroom, in view of everyone. She said that post that experience, she again had parents reaching out to her to say that their children had come home and said to them, "You know, this happened at school today, I didn't feel equipped to know what to do, can you register me in first aid training?" And so she said, I think she said five or six students had gone and done first aid training because they wanted to be able to support their friends better, and that those parents had also gone to do first aid training. I think that's another example of how it benefits our whole community. And the final one was another parent with a child who's now moving into high school, and we're assisting them with negotiating with the school or liaising with the school to get adjustments in place. But she wanted to tell me about the experience she'd had through primary school, at a different primary school, a public primary school, and the fact that at the end of almost every year, the teachers had come to her and said something along the lines of, "I haven't taught your child, she has taught me." And the real practical thing that she said about that was that the teachers, each of those teachers, had realised that implementing all the reasonable adjustments that we advocate for, so simple things like really clearly explaining expectations for a task, or hands-on learning, or teaching in a visual manner, that the entire class had benefited from that. There was no child that didn't become more engaged in their learning, become more excited to participate in school life, as a result of having that child who did need some additional adjustments. And so those benefits flow on, not just to, not just to those families, like I said, but to all these children who are now more engaged in their learning because the teachers are putting that extra kind of effort in. Teachers put a huge effort in, that's not what I'm saying, but they're taking those extra steps to work out new ways of providing information, and that changes the experiences for all the children.
Thank you. I'll ask one more question, and then I'll hand over to Sarah Mitchell, who is online and I understand wants to ask a question. I'm interested in how the Anti-Discrimination Act helps or hinders in a preventative as well as a responsive way. So I note that in the ACDL submission, there is talk about amending the Anti-Discrimination Act, and I know that in Victoria, the Equal Opportunity Act is seen as being better, which is not hard in my view, based on our act, but how does that play out in practice in terms of, you know, I guess, a better piece of anti-discrimination legislation helping to protect children from the outset?
Yep. So just in relation to the Anti-Discrimination Act, the provisions say that it is prohibited to discriminate against people with disabilities. It's not as comprehensive as the Commonwealth piece of legislation, and that was our primary submission, to say that it simply states you can't discriminate against a person with a disability in the education context, but it doesn't necessarily spell out how or make reference to disability education standards, which provide guidance as to, you know, consultation provisions or making reasonable adjustments or anything along those lines. And similar to, as well, the Commonwealth piece of legislation, the Disability Discrimination Act refers to the fact that the failure to make reasonable adjustments at school can amount to disability discrimination, whereas the Anti-Discrimination Act doesn't make that reference. And I think in that respect, it is limiting, more limiting than the Commonwealth piece of legislation.
Thank you. Did, yeah, did you want to have an answer to that as well?
I was just going to say that the Disability Royal Commission was critical of the Commonwealth Disability Discrimination Act, and a lot of those criticisms could equally be applied to the New South Wales Anti-Discrimination Legislation. And the Royal Commission made recommendations about reform of the Commonwealth Disability Discrimination Act, and those recommendations, in my view, could easily be applied to the New South Wales Anti-Discrimination Act. In terms of the Victorian legislation, I think the strengths of that are threefold compared to New South Wales. Firstly, it doesn't contain the comparator test, which has been criticised as being artificial and misconceived, and not focusing on the real issues at play in a discrimination matter involving disability. Secondly, it has a standalone duty on educational authorities to make reasonable adjustments, and that is a simple test that can be applied, and I know that Victoria Legal Aid in their submission to the Royal Commission made reference to the very positive impact that this standalone duty has had in their experience. And thirdly, as I mentioned in my brief opening statement, it does have a positive duty, it's not limited to educational authorities, but a positive duty to eliminate discrimination. And I think that's important because it shifts the system from being reactive and sort of putting the burden or the onus on students and their families to advocate for reasonable adjustments, and then to raise issues and make complaints where there are issues with the school, and instead aims to be more preventative and eliminate systemic barriers to discrimination.
Thank you. Ms Pearson, did you have anything to add on that?
I don't on that topic.
I'll go to Ms Mitchell online.
Thank you, Chair. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fine, thank you. I just explained to the Chair via text, today we have a power outage where I am, so it's making me hotspot off all sorts of devices, but I'm here, so I'm sorry if I am not as clear as I could be, just let me know. I just, I have a few questions, and one was just covered by the Chair in terms of the legislation, but the other thing that I wanted to ask really all three groups about is the transparency around reasonable adjustments. A lot of you mentioned it in your submissions, particularly around what students and parents can reasonably request, how much of that comes down to views of individual schools and educators, and how those adjustments are in place. So I'd be interested in your feedback or comments in relation to how you think we can better improve that process, particularly for families to really understand what they can be requesting, but also how the transparency piece could be better available, not just to students and families, but to the broader community. So keen for any ideas in that space from all witnesses or whoever would like to respond.
Who wants to go first?
Thank you very much for that question. I think issues around transparency of reasonable adjustments are a big concern for us and something that we did address in our submission. So I would say that at the moment, what we often hear is that parents don't know what they can ask for, and students don't know what they can advocate for, and that's particularly the case often in non-physical disabilities, so disabilities such as autism spectrum disorder and ADHD. And there's not a lot of transparency about, you know, what sort of adjustments have been made in comparable cases, what they can reasonably expect, and what might not be reasonable, you know, what's been refused in the past. So we would advocate for much greater transparency there. What we've suggested is, you know, potentially, there could be, within the department, a standalone senior position with expertise in disability services. As I mentioned in my opening statement, that position could adjudicate disputes about reasonable adjustments, or where it looks like there might be a dispute between a school and a student about reasonable adjustments to intervene early and try and avoid the breakdown of relations between a family and a school, which we see all too often, and which can have really devastating impacts for a student with disability. So it would be great to see a position that has the authority to make decisions about reasonable adjustments. Um, so it would be great to see a position that has the authority to make decisions about reasonable adjustments. And I guess to provide a level of oversight, it appears at the moment that often these decisions are based to a large degree on, you know, individual personnel within schools and principals. And there doesn't appear to be a lot of consistency. Um, it would also be great to see more um, publication of data around what reasonable adjustments are made. Um, and obviously that can be de-identified, but that would just give a measure of transparency to what's happening um, in the system at the moment and could be an important driver for systemic change.
Hmm.
Yes.
Did anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Ms Hager.
Okay, um, I second what Ms Hager has said in so, insofar as there is a lack of consistency um, with the type of adjustments that um, are available. And um, on the one hand, um, i- in relation to, to reasonable adjustments, if there was a prescriptive list as to what those adjustments are, I think it could potentially be quite limiting. Um, but a, a little bit more clarity about what reasonable adjustments uh, would include and some oversight would benefit a lot of families. Um, I had one parent um, last week, so also very recent, so not in the submission, um, inform me that between one teacher and another, the adjustments uh, that were implemented in the classroom were, were quite different. So the particular adjustment that she wanted for her child was an occupational therapist to attend um, the classroom for a couple of hours a fortnight. One year, um, with one teacher, that adjustment was refused. And in the same school, um, with a different teacher, that adjustment was allowed and greatly benefited the child. Um, so that discrepancy in, in experience and, and lack of uniformity across what is reasonable and what isn't. Um, I, I think a lot of that burden then falls onto the parents to advocate for their child. Um, and some uh, parameters around what adjustments um, are suitable would, would be beneficial. Um, Rebecca, did you have anything else?
Um, I was just gonna add as well that I think um, consultation is really the most critical way, like effective consultation between parents, the medical team if appropriate, and the school to getting um, appropriate reasonable adjustments in place. So I absolutely endorse um, what Ms Hager has said around um, transparency and, you know, potential list of possible adjustments. But I think it's critical that um, real guidance is given to schools and parents around what the, what a robust consultation process would look like. Um, so that then they can come out with something that's not a cookie cutter, every child with autism gets X. But, but something that's really tailored to that, to that child's needs.
Um, I, I would agree with the other witnesses. Um, usually when I'm seeing families, it's at a point where um, there's been school refusal. And um, we have uh, children who are not attending school. And a, and a big um, part of the reason um, that we see um, is because reasonable adjustments um, were not made. And often the families that we are seeing express frustration um, with exactly that, not knowing what they're able to ask for, feeling like um, they're having to advocate um, not only with the school but with other services as well. And that there's not a lot of communication um, between um, services and, and the school. Um, and I think that what we see is either um, children falling through the gaps because they're not aware of what services are, are available, or their families are um, fatigued from having to um, tell their story and advocate for their children across multiple um, services um, that are not communicating with each other or with the school.
I would agree with that. And could I ask one, could I make one additional comment? Um, which is around the ti- the need for timely reasonable adjustments. We often see a really lengthy process um, that parents and students have to go through to identify adjustments, negotiate with the school, make sure they're implemented. And that can take a really long time and can really affect a student's experience. So um, any decision-making around reasonable adjustments and also any options for, you know, seeking a review of decisions need to incorporate that timeliness element in our view.
Thank you. Um, Ms Mitchell, did you want to ask one more before I go to the other members?
I have two more questions, but do you want me to do one and then hold one?
No, no, that's okay. We've got plenty of time.
Still time. Okay, I'll quickly do my other two then. Um, the, well, I have more than two, but I'll take two and, you know, give time to it. Um, I wanna go now to the issue of um, better support for students with disability when it comes to exclusionary discipline. And again, this is something that I think you all raised in your submissions um, around making sure that um, you know, obviously we all know the statistics are pretty scary in terms of the percentage of children with disability, how much they're overrepresented in, in suspension um, and expulsion statistics. So I wanted to ask probably starting with you, Ms Hager, you talked in your submission about um, the removal of the maximum number of suspensions, that removal of department oversight in the most recent iteration of the um, behaviour sort of policy slash strategy within the department. Um, are you hearing concerns um, from families and, and students about what impact that might have? And you also talk about inclusive alternatives to suspension for students with disability as well. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate more on that?
Yes, thank you very much for that um, question. Um, so I'm not actually clear on the reasons why that oversight was removed from the most recent iteration of the suspension and expulsion procedures. Um, it had been referred to in the Disability Royal Commission's report favourably. Um, and now it appears that um, there's no kind of automatic trigger for departmental oversight of suspensions and expulsions. Um, I would say that we're not necessarily hearing concerns about that, but we can see the unfair impacts that have in that it just um, means that parents and students um, with disability are kind of having to continually deal with a school where, you know, relationships might have broken down or they might not feel like they trust the school has the students' um, best interests at heart for, for a variety of reasons. Um, and I think the, the importance of having someone who can have a semblance of independence and step in, in those situations. Um, and, you know, make sure the, the school has implemented reasonable adjustments, they have been implemented consistently. Um, they are the right reasonable adjustments for that particular student, having regard to um, their particular diagnosis and um, medical assessments. And in terms of the second part of your question, um, I would say probably two things. I think in, in the ACT, their laws and procedures around um, alternatives to exclusionary discipline uh, seem to me to be a lot stronger than in New South Wales and prevent, potentially could provide a guide. So um, they do provide for automatic monitoring from the department um, where a student has been suspended more than once or for a particular number of days. Um, and they require uh, oversight of whether appropriate supports and adjustments are being used. They require the department to look at the impact of exclusionary discipline on the student and their families, which is a really important consideration. Um, for example, we know, we had a family, a, a primary school student with disability who'd been consistently suspended from a New South Wales school. And the mother told me that, you know, she had to take so much time off work to pick up her, to pick up her child and to keep him home while he was suspended, that she almost couldn't pay her rent. So, you know, these, the use of exclusionary discipline can have a serious impact on the families as well. Um, and back to the ACT procedures, they also provide that um, you know, where suspension's not achieving a desired behavioural outcome and it is being used consistently um, for a particular student, that alternatives must be considered. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that was good. Does anybody else wanna, want to comment on that issue or you don't have?
I, I might actually just jump in. It follows on from um, a suspension and particularly relating to um, young people in out-of-home care. Um, oh, in the past in budget estimates, we've asked about um, some of that data. We're told that the department's education and, and DCJ will be starting to share it, but really only on enrolment. Um, interested to know in your experience of, I suppose, uh, how is that, is that data available to be able to um, uh, fully know how many young people have been suspended from school? Um, and, and what impact that's having?
Um, I, I understand that there is some work being done in this area. Um, I can't answer that question um, today, but if I can take it on notice.
That's fine, thank you.
I'll just. Yeah, sorry, um, go ahead, Mr Deane.
Thanks, so I, and thanks everyone for your appearance today. I, I wanted to come back to the exclusionary discipline issue. I suppose, uh, I wanted to perhaps um, pose the question about uh, the alternatives in the context of uh, staff shortages in the public system. And whether, what, what your views are about the, I suppose, the feasibility of um, uh, alternative practices that are more time-intensive. Uh, and what, what we can do to, to address uh, those issues that are perhaps part of the sort of systemic resistance to shifting away from reliance on exclusionary discipline.
I'm happy to um, answer in part. Um, I, I can't really speak to alternatives as a, in the sense of the, the post-behaviour discipline. Um, but what I would comment there is that I think when we see um, exclusionary discipline, it's very frequently in the context where there has been something like a behavioural management plan um, or an individual education plan that's in place. Um, and the school has failed to effectively implement it. Um, I think that's where we see the root of a really large number of our, of children who end up being repeatedly suspended. Um, so I would go back before and, and, and press the issue that before you get to the behavioural problem, I think there's a large number of those behavioural um, incidences could be removed if um, the school had better support to actually implement um, the steps that are in the behavioural management plan. Um, because so often when we speak to parents, we can see that they can link it really clearly um, to, you know, um, whatever the incident was, they can say X, Y and Z happened before that and we'd already told the school that if this happens, we might lead with this behaviour. Um, so I think for me, it'd be around how to effectively implement the adjustments that are already in place. And I think that would actually remove quite a significant number of the behavioural incidences where schools then do feel compelled to um, go down the exclusionary discipline.
Just, so just coming to, just on that issue, um, I mean, it strikes me that uh, that in most circumstances, the schools are, are reluctant to use exclusionary discipline. Like that's, that is a sort of last resort. And that uh, um, I suppose the, the purpose of my earlier question was really looking at uh, what are the sort of, your understanding of the sort of systemic, systemic obstacles to those earlier steps being implemented? Because it str- strikes me that part of that is just a, a sort of work and time pressure on teaching and support staff in schools, that they, that the capacity is just not there in the system to be able to um, uh, implement the plans uh, in the way that uh, perhaps uh, envisage that might uh, avert a need to take a step towards exclusionary discipline. Can, can I write some comment on that?
Um, I mean, I would agree with Ms Belts' comments, but um, I think you're absolutely right in that there's at least two barriers that we um, observe. And the first is, is funding and resource pressures and shortages, and the second is um, capacity. Um, and I mean that in the sense of, you know, appropriate training and qualifications um, around assisting students with disability um, for teachers and other school staff. Um, and we've seen, I mean, I think it touches on an example that Ms Abdu has given in the past, but we've seen, for example, students having a really positive experience with a particular teacher at school or a particular principal, and then a, a change in staff and a complete um, change in the way that that student has been treated and a corresponding decline in their behaviour leading to exclusionary discipline. And I think that shows the extent to which the current system is um, reliant to a large extent on personnel, on individual personnel. Um, and so I think looking at the more systemic barriers and fixes in this situation is really important.
So just, I, I suppose on that issue, um, I mean, the department have indicated that there's been more than two hundred thousand uh, children with a disability in the public system out of, you know, eight hundred thousand students. Uh, uh, there's an expectation that uh, uh, each of those students would have individual learning plans. Uh, how realistic is it that, that, that can be accomplished? Given the, you know, we're talking about a mass system, uh, that level of uh, tailored approach to individual students? How realistic is it to, that we can meet that expectation of having that level of individual tailored approach?
I don't think that I have the expertise to answer that question, um, in that we only deal with individual clients when they come to us with a particular problem where we can see that that discrimination has taken place. And so I don't think we can turn our mind to sort of that, that aspect of it.
So just if I may just um, interject there then. So just coming back to, I guess, what your expertise is and what you have seen in this regard. Um, I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding about what an adjustment means. Um, are you able to give us some examples of the types of adjustments? You gave us a few earlier, but the types of adjustments um, that have made a big difference that aren't really that onerous? You know, but is there any sort of case studies or?
Sure. Um, so in relation to um, adjustments that, that make a significant difference, the one that I've mentioned where an occupational therapist or a speech pathologist or um, a counsellor has been able to go into the classroom, assess the classroom environment um, and full well knowing what the child's needs are and what their um, disability is, can make um, some recommendations to a teacher.
Can I just clarify that?
Yeah.
Um, we're not talking about the school paying for?
More often than not, they're NDIS funded.
Right. So it's just allowing that person in?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. And all the, all the personnel would have, working with children checks and, you know, um, appropriate qualifications. Sometimes they are privately funded by the parents. Um, but either way, it's not for, it's not an obligation on the school to pay, to pay. So that, that's one example. Um, another example would be allowing additional time in exams or additional breaks. And even those simple um, adjustments sometimes aren't implemented because it's not communicated across um, the teacher that is examining that particular student, if it's not the usual teacher. Um, assistive technology uh, sometimes comes up in terms of uh, dictation software or typing. Um, yeah, those are just a couple of examples.
A few others that um, we see a lot of is um, sort of sensory breaks for, for students. So being permitted to use um, sensory stimuli in the classroom can really assist their concentration. Um, movement breaks are incredibly helpful. Um, and so that's simply um, the teacher being mindful of the time and, and permitting a child to step out of the classroom for a few minutes, um, to engage in something that their um, their paediatrician or someone like that has assisted them in teaching them how to go through. Um, uh, transitions are a really difficult time for students often. And so um, the school just putting in some scaffolding around how to support children during those transition times. Um, another big one that we see is where there's a change in the schedule. Um, and so even um, just uh, communicating those changes in the schedule to um, parents with a little bit of notice so that they can then prepare the child to say, you know, you thought there was gonna be art after lunch, but today actually it's gonna be X, Y and Z. Um, those are the things that we often see are what um, precipi- like precipitate the, the behavioural um, um, problem that then leads to that disciplinary measure being taken. Um, and so things like that, there's, I, I could go on for more.
So when, when you're talking about transition there, um, I know from experience with my kids, um, their, their school sends out a social story every time there's an excursion or whatever. But it's, it's for everybody, so every child that can benefit from that ends up with a social story so they can prepare themselves um, for knowing what's gonna happen on a day that's a bit unusual to their usual routine. Um, is, is that, I guess the question is what, what sort of percentage? We often hear that schools don't have enough resources, that there's not enough um, sort of infrastructure in place, I guess, to allow these adjustments to be made. How, what sort of percentage are we talking about that is of that sort of uh, less onerous nature? Versus the really, I guess, the, the bigger types of adjustments that we hear about as being an obstacle?
We don't really have that data available. Um, it's a really good question.
And. Anecdotally, I would say, I don't feel comfortable putting a figure on it, but it's not a small number where, where students would benefit from those small um, steps being taken. But that is just my anecdotal, from my own matters. Um, we, we, yeah.
Thank you.
Provide that today.
Thank you. Um.
Thank you, um how much resistance is there, I mean?
I'm sorry, uh Mr De Adam, sorry, I've got Ms Mahalik waiting and then we'll come back, if that's okay?
It was just on that point.
Do you want to just say?
Oh, it's all right, she's seating her.
Anthony, you can just ask.
Spot. Go ahead, Mr De Adam.
I was just gonna say, like, I'm I'm curious about the sort of uh if if the adjustments are. Uh sort of low level, low um low demand on schools. How how much resistance is actually encountered? I would have thought most schools are pretty. Uh positive towards making adjustments where they can. Uh and that that if there's a there's a reasonable proposition around an adjustment that the school would be quite accommodating. It's sort of, I suppose, you you're probably at the pointy end because you're dealing with uh. You know, uh parents who are in sort of uh situations where there's clear clearly. Agreements that has been unable to be resolved, but perhaps that gives us, you know, a distorted perspective about. You know, how much resistance is actually in the system? Do you able to offer some comment around that?
Yeah, I um we do, our centre does acknowledge that uh we are at the pointy end of those um complaints and disputes and often. We are hearing what's gone wrong at school, um and we often do advise. Uh where there's been even suspensions and expulsions that sometimes those suspensions and expulsions are justified in in the circumstance. Um it because it would impose an unjustifiable hardship with the school, um didn't didn't do that or. Um how how else is a school meant to address um safety concerns for. Uh you know, where there's a breach of safety of of other students or teachers. However, more often than not, we do hear, you know, my my child has a learning plan in place. Um they uh need to be given ten minutes extra exam time, they weren't given that um exam time. Or, for example, it took three months to even get a learning plan in place, even though I provided. The diagnosis to the school uh right at the beginning of the school term, so um I'm sure there are plenty of positive stories. Um and and some that Rebecca's uh mentioned at the beginning, um. But yeah, there is quite quite a bit of resistance and it does depend on. Individual attitudes as well, um is what our experience is.
If I can also um speak to this question, and I think we'll we'll speak to the previous two questions as well. Where I'm um seeing children and and families is um often at a point where um we've come. Past that and um there haven't been reasonable adjustments put in place and. We have children and young people who haven't been at school for a significant amount of time, up to. Years um that they haven't been at school before we're seeing them, um and what um. I have found, um at least in in my practice, um is that there is a lot of inconsistency in terms of. Um the school's um willingness to implement um what sometimes can be. Um reasonably low level um uh reasonable adjustments, um at a point where. Um not only are we facing what um reasonable adjustments should have been in place for these children to start with. But also um what is a pretty huge barrier getting back to school because they've been out for so long. Um there's often very significant anxiety around that, um the children and young people are of. Often acutely aware of the pressure on their families and um most often are saying to us, we want to get back to school. We want to be at school, um but these are the reasons why we really can't. Um so I I think that it's very um inconsistent in my experience.
Can I ask about the, I suppose, the incidence of, is this a a question that's. Perhaps equally dispersed across public and private uh schools, or is this uh predominantly a problem in the public system? Or predominantly in the private system?
Um in my experience, um in terms of the work that I do, um it's with public school system, um. I I wouldn't be able to speak to though whether or not it is also an issue in in um the private school system, I think that would be. Best left for the other witnesses.
Yeah, I I don't have specific data at my fingertips, but um I would say that we see. A more or less equal distribution across public and private school systems in New South Wales.
Similarly, I don't have the data, but anecdotally, I would say it's a fairly even split.
Um I will now go to Ms Mahalik for her questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um yeah, thank you for um joining us today, it's been actually really interesting listening to you and I was listening to you upstairs earlier as well, so I have. I haven't missed your um contributions today, um I just want to very quickly, a couple of quick questions, so just. One, is there a marked difference with your experiences between primary and secondary? Is there perhaps more accommodation done at the primary school level than at the secondary? If there was a way of making a comparison?
I'll I'll speak first, um anecdotally, I would say, yes, schools find it easier to implement adjustments. In primary school, um I think for obvious reasons, you know, they have a single classroom teacher. Um they're not moving from classroom to classroom and that 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 movement process or the transition, as I like to call it, sometimes can be really difficult. Um and so we do see students uh or schools and parents struggling together to work out. These adjustments worked really well in primary school, how are we gonna um sort of implement them in secondary school? Um so I think that is, it is harder um at times to to put in those the sorts of adjustments. Um where they're really centred around um like space or movement or um sort of that relationship between the the student and the teacher. Um can be harder, and I I see school, and to be fair, I see schools grappling with that, um trying really hard. And I think parents do sometimes come at it going a little bit um. Uh to saying, well, can't we just do exactly what we did in primary school? And that puts schools in a tricky position to say, well, the the very fabric of high school is different to primary school, um and we need to be a bit more creative here.
And yeah, look, I I thought that would be the answer too. I just just quickly also want to ask, um what would your um. Your point of call when you're first dealing with a school traditionally would be who, the principal? Is there a delegated person that um that you find that you you tend to be dealt with? Is it ad hoc? Um I'd like to know, because for me personally, I have a, I'm a guardian for my disabled brother, so I've had a lifetime of dealing with this sort of stuff. Um but my um experience tends to be, and I think you touched on it before um earlier when you mentioned um. Um how families are really frustrated because at every point of call you you have to re have the same discussions again and explain the issues and so forth, but. I, what I find is that there isn't a point of call at schools, that's what I I find, I find. Um and I've done a lot of this, I was, for twelve years I was a member um for Bankstown, so in the lower house seat too, so I had a lot of families. In that electorate that I used to deal with in trying to help them navigate um with their local schools as well. Um and I just felt that we're constantly dealing with different people, so rather than dealing with the principal or a delegate. Um that is very close to the principal, that could be the same person, each on each occasion, you're constantly dealing with different people, so at one school. It may be a particular teacher, at another school, it's a different position altogether that uh manages these sorts of incidences and issues, so. I just want to know from your experience as advocates, how um whether, you know, I mean, we're looking for. Your guidance and I guess experience and um would, you know, the education system be far better off? Having a central point at every school that this is, you know, top down. Um one, I think the principals need to be given a particular type of training in this area and actually um champion disability. Um from their level, from from the top down, and that the delegate, um one delegate be given that main role of accommodating and supporting schools. And that be actually a very senior position within the school system, so that every time a family or different families have to. Um manage issues, particularly as they're navigating different teachers, as you were saying earlier, I think one of your examples earlier was. One teacher was very good, another teacher in the same school had a different experience or wouldn't provide those sorts of accommodations. So I'm just, I'm open to all of you for any view on that kind of of what I've asked.
Um for me, when when it gets to the point of there being an application for a compulsory school in order, um the students have. All the families have been referred to a homeschool liaison officer, so we have, there is um a point of call, but that's sort of very far down the line. Um I have found that um generally, most of the schools that I have dealt with, there is. There is one person um that it, they usually have nominated as the contact person for the family, um whether it's a um welfare officer. Uh or or the principal or assistant principal, um but there's inconsistency across schools um as to who that person is. Um so we're often having to make those inquiries, who is the person that that the family should be contacting, um. But that's just within my experience of the schools that I've dealt with, I don't know that I can say that that's generally um the experience of all families.
I I would agree with that in terms of different schools having different roles and I can definitely sympathise. Um with your experience of having to explain, you know, somebody's needs again and again to different people, that's also what we often hear. Mostly when um clients come to us, it's because they have been suspended or expelled, and so at that point, the principal is the person involved, but it does seem like. Families often feel that there might not be a champion within the school for them or somebody who's been responsible for sort of guiding the student. Through the whole of their schooling experience um at that particular school. I find that um in relation to, your your comments speak to one of our recommendations. Um one of our recommendations was to have a point of call for um for parents, have a policy and procedure that is. Um uniform across schools because it is very ad hoc, it just depends on the school, and often parents will um reach out to. The principal um for adjustments and then as um. The uh, you know, as mentioned earlier, that there are staffing and uh resourcing issues in relation to. Well, schools are under a lot of pressure, the principal can't necessarily um comment or or address each individual. Um learning plan or request for an adjustment in a timely manner, so there's a bit of a a flow-on effect. Um so yeah, I think we, I I'd agree with your comments and recommendations to have um a bit more of a. Policy or a uniform approach as to um who the point of call is for parents to to request adjustments and liaise with.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh I'm interested in your um the submission um in relation to Tyron, which was a case study. Um that you uh put in in relation to, I think it was the behavioural management plan, but it's a question for everyone. Um Mike, I'm interested to know what is currently um the appeal process for a a parent or a family? If a school refuses to um sit down and and develop a plan, um or they're not following that plan, what what can parents do?
Okay, so i- in relation to uh Tyron's case, for those unfamiliar with it, um it was a a nine-year-old child who has autism. And um ADHD and there was a behaviour management plan in place, there was an independent learning plan in place. Um one of the adjustments that was really clearly spelled out in those plans was to have noise cancelling headphones. Um as noise was a trigger for for this um child, and during a fire drill, that wasn't implemented and um. Then uh Tyron had a meltdown and um he he ended up um. Uh getting a little bit aggressive and then was pinned down by four or five schoolteachers and then secluded for about twenty minutes. And 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 the OT wasn't allowed to to um visit him or anything during during those times. Now, this is an example where the failure to to implement an adjustment which was provided resulted in. Um a behaviour that uh warranted a suspension, um but it is the. Failure to implement the adjustment um that ultimately we argued led to led to the suspension. Um in that case, we ended up making complaint to the Australian Human Rights Commission and. Um we settled at conciliation, but it the process for that parent to uh make that complaint. You know, she she had to um wait twelve months before a conciliation and in between that time changed schools. And then and you know, tried to do our part-time education and homeschooling and things like that, so it was a long tedious process for that parent.
So I suppose that that's the next question is, how can that be improved? Because it a twelve-month process to have a decision made that. The wrong decision was made in the first place and the impact that has on that young person and also the family. Um how can it be simplified? What changes need to be made?
I think it's the preventative um measures, it's it's about ed- educating and equipping firstly schools. Um with what their obligations are and then um, you know, and and training teachers and principals and having uniform. Um policies and procedures, and clear policies and procedures that um parents can access. And then as well, equipping um parents with the knowledge about what their rights and obligations are. Um and uh we we've also submitted that in terms of legislative reform that. More funding should be given to um AD New South Wales, for example, to handle these complaints so that they can process these complaints a lot faster. Um uh you know, whether that's possible or not, that's one of our recommendations.
Do you think also the government's pushing back on any funding, but anyhow?
I think also giving um a power to make a binding decision um by AD New South Wales would make a really significant difference. Um because the process of going through going through the complaint is that it's just a conciliative process. Um if the other party decides, like refuses to participate in the process, um AD New South Wales has no power to compel them to do that. Um and so and then if you if you get around a table and you don't reach an outcome, um the client then needs to go to NCAT. Um and that can be overwhelming for people, um and so I think if um for some of our clients, once we explain that process to them. They sort of think, oh, it's too much when I'm already trying to deal with my child.
Can I just jump in there, just a quick one, sorry, apologies. Does that mean, uh do you have examples where the schools re- refuse to participate? Are there examples for uh in a conciliatory process?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look.
Because that would be very alarming if there were either private or public examples.
In my.
Refuse to engage in a conciliation process.
In my experience, um the New South Wales Department of Education has always participated in conciliations and um. Yeah.
I was gonna say the same, in that I'd, I we could take it on notice to see whether that had happened before. I have had one example, not with a department school, but with another school where they came to conciliation, um but um they didn't, they didn't. Put forward any sort of meaningful settlement proposals, so whilst you could say they participated, um it may not have been on good faith.
If I could, sorry, go back to your question very briefly, um I would say that um discrimination complaints are a really important safety net, but we think that there should be. A a clear and easy initial step, um for example, just an an easy appeal within a department and to have a, you know, a decision maker within the department with. Expertise in disability services who can make binding decisions and make um decisions about resources quickly, I mean, often, you know, the. The relationship between the school and the student and the parents is so important that, you know, making a disability discrimination complaint is a really big step for a lot of people. Um and they don't want to take that step, but they do want to have the issues resolved, so I think having someone who's. Has a degree of independence from the school and who can make binding decisions on the school would be a huge step forward.
So is there not that, are you saying that that process is not in place, an internal appeals mechanism and a capacity for. Either the the director of educational learning or someone more senior in the department, the secretary? Making a determination and giving a direction to a school to comply, that doesn't occur?
I mean, I'm I'm not an expert on on everything that's um within the department, certainly there are options to make complaints, but I think what we would like to see is just. A very clear process by which someone with expertise in disability services and adjustments within the department. Um can make decisions in these sorts of cases and so parents and students know that there's someone that they can easily go to, who can make quick decisions and. You know, that person or that position could also um have like a systemic oversight role as well, so look at. Data and driving, you know, change across the system informed by complaints, um I think that would be a great, a great thing to see.
I, yeah, sorry, ma'am chair, I I agree with that because I think what you're you're right in what you're saying there. You do need that separation. And I don't think with school directors who are quite normally very close with the principals and the schools that they manage, that that level of separation exists. And I've seen examples myself um where ultimately if you go beyond a principal and you end up dealing with department, um the school directors, for example, um they will back the exact position that the principal has put forward. So you end up in a situation where you're almost a stalemate and you haven't resolved any issue. So there do- does need to be some type of separation. Um, how uh it can be um ultimately in practice done is another matter. Um, but I think, I I'm assuming the other ladies here agree as well, that 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 would be, there is some difficulty in that. Do you find that when you're dealing with the school director or anyone beyond the particular principal of school, that they, the department tends to just back the position that the school had in any event? If you can't comment, that's fine, it may be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I don't think I have enough.
No, that's fine.
Experience on in in going beyond to see that.
Um, just before I hand back to um Mrs Mitchell, who um I understand has more questions as well. I just wanted to ask a quick one about um private schools being, I understand effectively exempt from the anti-discrimination provisions. Can you explain how that sort of plays out in practice? What do you do if someone comes to you from a private school then with a complaint? Are you going to the feds or?
Yeah, essentially, the only mechanism for for com- or avenue for complaint is the Disability Discrimination Act. It's to lodge a complaint with the Australian Human Rights Commission um for a breach of the Disability Discrimination Act, which in fairness is more comprehensive than the Anti-Discrimination um Act. So however, the the issue with that, the limitation is that um the AHRC takes a longer time to process complaints than AD New South Wales. And then if the matter doesn't settle at conciliation with the Australian Human Rights Commission, the next step is to uh make an application to the Federal Circuit Court or the Federal Court and Family Court of Australia. Whereas if um there was a a possibility for a a child attending a or a parent um to make an app, attending a private school to make a complaint with AD New South Wales. If the matter doesn't settle at conciliation, then the next step is um to make an application to NCAT. And it's just a faster jurisdiction. You can have orders made. It's a lot less costly and um a lot easier for self-represented litigants to navigate that jurisdiction.
And is that the case in other states? Do you know that private schools are exempt from their state anti-discrimination legislation? Do you think that's unusual?
It's not the case in all other states and territories. Um, certainly Victoria, for example, private schools are covered by the state legislation.
And is that a recommendation from, yeah, from any of you that we?
It certainly is from us, yeah. We we would say that New South Wales laws should cover public and private schools.
Um, thank you. I'll hand over to you, Mrs Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just have a couple of questions from the legal aid submission, so to you, Ms Pearson. Um, I wanted to ask about, I think it was recommendation number eight. You talked about having um sort of better processes in child health screening to have an earlier diagnosis for for some disabilities. Um, is that something that you envisage should happen sort of pre-student starting school? Or where do you think the gap is in relation to that screening process?
I think that um the earlier the better. Um, my um experiences, um a- as I've said already, is mainly um at the point where um we have children who um are not attending school um for a variety of reasons. But um one of the main ones that I see is um due to um firstly reasonable adjustments not being made. Um, but also very much undiagnosed um disabilities. Um, the main ones that I have seen um in my practice is really ADHD um and autism. Um, and as I've said previously, um one of um the biggest issues that we see for families um is a lack of communication um between services. Um, one of the other really big issues um in relation to uh the screening process is that um particularly for families who uh are feeling the pressure of um a child not being at school because of these issues.
Hmm.
Um, and that often comes along with um other complexities and vulnerabilities for that family. Uh, then seeing um e- either an extremely long wait time um to see um anyone um or uh facing extremely costly um processes um to be assessed. Uh, so I I think that um, yeah, earlier the better. Um, but uh that um collaboration between um Department of Education um Health and Department of Communities and Justice, I think is extremely important. Um, and um, you know, better support for families in um knowing what services there are available um and access to those services.
Hmm, I would agree. Thank you. Um, and then I just wanted to also ask you about um the points in your submission where you talk about school refusal, but also flexibility in education delivery, those last couple of recommendations. I'm wondering, and I mean, you've sort of touched on this already, but um in terms of school refusal being almost a symptom of sort of whether it's in and out of school for suspensions or, you know, not having that trust, not having the appropriate um sort of measures in place in terms of adjustments. But are you seeing a correlation between school refusal and students with disability? And then in terms of flexibility in education delivery, where do you think the gaps are in the system currently that isn't being offered, that should be offered?
Um, yes, um, I I don't have the actual stats in terms of um the numbers of children who um have disabilities or um there's likelihood that there's an undiagnosed disability that um plays into school refusal. But anecdotally, I would say that at least within my practice, it's two-thirds of the children that we're seeing who are um experiencing school refusal. Uh.
Hmm.
In relation to the flexibility, um again, I think that one of the um biggest things that we see is inconsistency across um schools. So um we uh, the process that we have in terms of where um we're acting for a um child or young person or a um parent, where there's been a compulsory schooling order application brought by the Department of Education um in the Children's Court. Um, the first step that we usually do is a compulsory schooling order conference um that is convened by a registrar um of the court. Um, where we're acting um for the the respondent, um whether that is the child or young person or the parent. Um, we will attend. Uh, there's usually then attendance from the homeschool liaison officer uh and either the principal or assistant principal, and if there is a welfare officer, a welfare officer. Um, what I have found and members of my team has found is that we will go in with um a similar set of proposals that we have seen work um for one child or young person and have the school say, um, no, that's just not possible. Um.
Hmm.
For whatever reason that may be. Um, one of the biggest ones that um we have faced um resistance to is um flexible attendance um when transitioning back into school. So some of the schools that we've um worked with and um we've found that this really works um for getting kids back into school um is being able to attend, say, for a couple of hours to start with, for a week or two. And then having a check-in with the school and seeing how that's going, um and then increasing that time. Um, there have been schools that we've had resistance in relation to that. Um, and one of the big reasons that we've been told is um we don't want to set the child or young person up that that's what their school experience should be. They should be going straight back in. Um, another um issue that we've faced in along a similar vein is that um often the children and young people, particularly in high school, um are feeling quite anxious about um going back into a classroom and not being at the same level as their peers because they've missed quite a considerable amount of school and already faced difficulties in terms of some of the schoolwork anyway. Um, is getting work sent home prior to coming back into school. Um, we've had some success with that and we've also had um some situations where the school has said um that's just not something that we're able to do or that we would support.
Hmm, and I guess that goes back to that issue of inconsistency again, depending on the school and, you know, you can say it must be frustrating when you say it worked well in some areas, but then if it can't be implemented to scale or across other other schools, yeah?
Yes, very much so.
Um, just for the community's benefit, I'm going to go to um Ms McLaren Jones for a couple of questions and then back to Mr De Adam. So go ahead.
Um, thank you. This follows on from my um colleague's earlier question and also a comment that um Ms Pearson made earlier about um homeschool officers. I just want to get a better understanding um when a young person um is suspended. Um, and uh particularly in an environment where uh one or both parents are working, how is that supervision maintained at at home for that young person if if um the parents or parent is working? And who's who is ultimately responsible? Is it something that that school should be ensuring? The young person is getting the resources and the learning materials? Or is it, does it fall back onto parents who are already obviously under a lot of pressure and stress with everything that's going on?
Uh, I don't know that I can actually answer that question, um but can take it on notice. Um. Or it may be that one of the other witnesses is able to answer that question in terms of the actual obligations.
Or or if you've received any any complaints or issues around that, surrounding that.
I um, I can also take it on notice. I believe that the suspension and expulsion procedures do have provisions about um continuing education while a student is suspended. Um, but in practice, um a complaint, you know, that we frequently hear or sometimes hear is that um schools haven't provided work or there hasn't been, um I guess enough from the school for to support that student during that um period while they're suspended. And, you know, where it's a long suspension, that can be really critical to a student's education.
I would second that, um particularly in in the sense of the work. Um, I can't, I don't think I can speak to the other part of your question. But I've seen mixed responses, some where parents will tell me, yep, the school has sent home work, it's been great. And somewhere they haven't received anything. Um, so I'd say it's mixed.
And my final question is around um the terminology of inclusive education. Uh, another submission has um raised concerns that it's not clear enough. I just wanted to know if any of you had an opinion in relation to that. No, that's okay.
I'll go back to you, Mr De Adam.
Thanks. Um, I wanted to, I suppose, I've been involved in uh litigation uh in another capacity. And obviously, when you end up at the conciliation table, uh you know, part of the process is really trying to delve into what the source of the resistance is from the other side. And I suppose, I know you're all here as advocates for kids with disabilities, but uh I wonder whether you might be able to perhaps uh provide some insight on what you think is the, you know, the the source of the resistance, particularly in relation to the Department of Education. Is it an argument about reasonableness, that there's no agreement about the what what what's being proposed as being reasonable? I don't think, it's fair to say that I don't think the department off acts in a sort of malicious or obstinate way for no reason. Uh, perhaps from your experience, what do you think is the primary driver of the resistance of the department to making adjustments? Is it a question that they they consider them unreasonable, unreasonable burden on the department? Is it about moral hazard? What what's, it's kind of driving the reason why the department wouldn't want to uh make accommodations for kids who've got, you know, clearly have a disability and need uh adjustments made.
Um, I might, I might go first. Um, thank you, um, Mr De Adam. In in relation to um the department, I definitely agree that there, I I don't think there's any malicious intent um in relation to the failure to make adjustments. And there are obviously a whole multitude of factors um when it comes to disability discrimination complaints. Um, eh, and the reasonableness of either adjustments or whether a child has been um discriminated in some other way. And those factors are considered before um commencing uh a complaint, including um whether the school has the resources to implement the adjustments, um any kind of defence that the school has put forward. Um, but often it's not, it's not about intent, it's more so about a a lack of um awareness and a lack of um uh willingness to implement the adjustments due to um ignorance or a a lack of resources as opposed to um, oh, we're aware that we have these obligations and under the Disability Discrimination Act, but we're just going to ignore them. Um, that's what's often been um at my experience. Um, if if you wanted to add anything else.
I agree with that.
Yep.
So on the panel?
Go ahead, Ms Pearson.
Um, I I think that um I second um what Ms Abdu has said in relation to no malicious intent. I've, I have found in my experiences that um everyone um that I've been working with, um whether it is the school, the homeschool liaison officers, the um lawyers from um the department, um the family, um the children and young people, um the court. Um, we are all wanting um the children and young people to be able to get the best out of their education, um no matter what their circumstances. Um, I think that my experience has been in terms of resistance um is, does come down to that lack of um awareness or training um as one, one part of it. Um, definitely capacity of the schools is another. Um, but one of the other big ones that um that I have seen um a- and have already spoken to a a little bit today is um where uh it's undiagnosed. There's an undiagnosed disability that is impacting a child or young person's um uh experiences um at school. And I think that sometimes where there's um obviously an issue for a student, um but there's no, no documentation, um there's no behaviour plan, there's no um nothing in place yet in terms of reasonable adjustments. And um where I'm seeing these students is that um because that hasn't happened, they've withdrawn from school. Um, and we're um not only um sort of trying to assist this child and young person um to go through that process um of getting the right assistance and support in place, but then get back into school as well.
So do you, I I'm assuming you support the move by the department towards more um uh functional needs assessment rather than relying on diagnosis? I think uh, so rather, is that the solution, that to to move away from a a system that uh link supports to a diagnosis rather than uh a system where you just, you try and make adjustments based on the functional needs of the child, irrespective of whether they've got a diagnosis?
Um.
You have any?
I don't know that I can, I have the expertise to particularly comment on that, actually.
Okay. Can I ask just further about your submission? Um, uh, in your recommendation three, uh you talk about exclusionary discipline being avoided unless necessary as a last resort to avert the risk of serious harm to the student, other students or staff. I obviously, uh, serious harm is a sort of, is a higher test than harm. Uh, are you suggesting in that submission that, that we should tolerate some level of harm? To other students or the student or staff like. Perhaps maybe you might want to elaborate on why you think a serious harm threshold is the appropriate one rather than a harm threshold?
Um, so this recommendation, um, and area is not within my scope of expertise either, but I can take this on notice. Um, as it is something that Legal Aid New South Wales would be able to answer.
Can I, oh, great, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask a final question in relation to. I know, um, Ms Pearson in your submission and also Ms Hager, you talk about the, um. The sort of pipeline to prison from exclusion in particular. Can you talk a bit more about that? Given, given that you are lawyers, um, this is a good opportunity to ask about that aspect.
I, um, don't know that I have a lot of expertise there. I mean, I know that there is research around. The effects of exclusionary discipline that links it to the school to prison pipeline and that's what we would be referring on. Um, referring to in our submission more than my personal experience advising clients.
Hmm. Are there any, sort of, yeah, do you have any case studies or any? Any personal experiences at all in that?
Um, unfortunately, that's not, that's also not within the scope of my experience. Um, uh, I understand, um, that it it would be something that again would be. Um, within the experiences of, um, people at Legal Aid, um, New South Wales. Obviously, as I've said before, um, our, um, criminal law service does. Um, provide advice and representation to, um. Children and young people and also adults in in criminal matters. Um, and our children's civil or legal service also provides a holistic assistance. Um, for, um, children and young people who are experiencing, um, complex legal. Um, and non-legal issues, um, that, um, sort of encompass, um, that. Um, those issues, but it's not something that I can personally speak to.
Thank you. Um, any last questions from you, Ms Mahalik? Who, everyone's asked their last question. Excellent. Um, thank you so much. This was an excellent session to start, um, the first hearing day of the inquiries.
You were our guinea pigs.
Thank you very much. Um, and very ably translated by our Auslan translators as well. Um, to the extent that there were questions taken on notice or that there will be supplementary questions. The committee secretary will be in touch in relation to the process for responding. Um, but that brings us to an end for this session. We will take a one hour break and we'll be back at two o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're back. Welcome back and welcome to our next witnesses. I would like to give a reminder in relation to the Auslan interpretation that we have for the hearing today. Auslan interpreters will be interpreting at this hearing and shown on the live broadcast. So I again ask members and our witnesses to please speak clearly into the microphone and to wait until the previous speaker has finished talking. It worked quite well in the last session, so yeah, I shouldn't jinx it. Everything seems to be going very well. So, welcome. Can I start on my left? If you could state your name and position, title, and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Okay. My name is Emma Bruce. I am an organizer with the New South Wales Teachers' Federation. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I'm Natasha Watts, Senior Vice President of the New South Wales Teachers' Federation. I also solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. We do have your submission. Thank you very much. Are you able, or sorry, do you want to give a short opening statement?
Yes, please.
Please go ahead.
So firstly, we'd like to acknowledge we're on the land of the Aboriginal people. This always and always was and will be Aboriginal land, the Gadigal people. So, wanted to open by saying the stratified nature of Australian society is reflected in the New South Wales schooling system, is substantially driven by a set of public policies aimed at entrenching privilege within socially advantaged families. The intended outcome has been the residualisation of the public education system to the status of a safety net. Such a schooling system exacerbates social inequalities by excluding disadvantaged students from full academic and social development. Federal government funding and school marketisation policies or choice policies alongside state governments dismantling of the central provision of public education to include all have been major drivers of residualisation. So Australia's school system is one of the most socially segmented in the IOECD. Social disadvantage is the exclusion of people from social resources and power because of low socioeconomic status and not belonging to a dominant social group. Social disadvantage, sorry, the public education system educates the majority of people from disempowered groups. We educate 82% of low SES students, 76% of students with disability. Equity is the provision of additional resources to disadvantaged social groups to support pursuit of excellence and equality. The proper levels of recurrence, schools funding, to grow, recruit, retain, and support, and expanding system entitlement of well-qualified and specialisation teachers alongside long-term recurrent investment in quality and specialised infrastructure and equipment are two examples of the amelioratory reforms necessary to provide the enabling conditions for all students, including students with disability, to achieve their best in school and beyond that. So the disability loading in the original needs-based funding model was absent, and it has not grown commensurate with growth in diagnosis and need, and we are still $1.9 billion short this year alone in New South Wales public education. So, over the last decade, till about 2021, capital investment in public schools was also half that of the private school counterpart, and if we were to talk about that in aggregate figures, in the year of 2021, that was a $2.7 billion gap between private school kids as an aggregate and public school kids. So, colleagues, to close gaps, we must have an increased provision of resources to students experiencing social disadvantage, including those with disabilities. Our submission does outline the commitment of the New South Wales Teachers' Federation and our membership, both past and present, to students with disability and the work that we've done advocating through other inquiries and such. So, of students with disabilities, just to repeat a few figures in opening, in New South Wales this year, we have 86% of students with specific learning needs in mainstream classes, 11% in support classes, and 3% in SSPs. So federation members know that a strong public education system that includes everybody is one of the most important institutions in a democracy, and we continue to campaign in this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The way that the committee is working at the moment is that we will go around and sort of take it in turns to ask questions. We've got a half-hour session here with you today, just for the committee's benefit. I will ask a couple of questions, then I'll go to Mr D Adam, and then to Mrs Mitchell, and then to Mrs McLaren-Jones.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to talk about this concept of reasonable adjustments, and the previous panel of witnesses were explaining to us, you know, sort of the category of what you would view as being sort of a less onerous reasonable adjustment versus those that might be a bit more. Can you talk about that from your perspective, and particularly in the context of an under-resourced school system where teachers don't have very much spare time, i.e. zero, negative spare time? How does that impact on what is and is not a reasonable adjustment?
Is it okay if we both take an answer to this?
Yeah.
Emma and I are both employed by the union as officers now, but we both have background in schools. So I, my background is secondary, substantively I'm a deputy principal. So, I'm going to talk from that perspective, if that's okay. So, the NCCD data collection tells us that about 30% just under students last year are having an adjustment that attracts no funding, and so that, the students in that cohort are all different. But a student, for example, with a vision impairment that doesn't need a whole lot of intervention might mean that the teacher is creating resources that are A3 insiders rather than A4 insiders, so that might be an adjustment, for instance, that attracts no funding, that the teacher is having to add into their workload, for example. The child also might be sitting at the front of the room. Those are the sorts of things that might constitute low-level adjustments that doesn't attract funding in a mainstream setting. Other students might have, teachers might be adjusting their practice in terms of the way they communicate with a student depending on their need. So it might be they have to be extra clear or say somebody's name or use a certain tone. If it's a child who's got some trauma, for instance, it might be about tone and the way you articulate to that student, and sometimes those students don't have any other resourcing support other than the adjustment the teacher is making. I'll let Emma take an answer, because she's, her background's from, she's an AP from the largest SSP in New South Wales. Very different.
Yes, thanks Natasha. Yeah, very different perspective, but essentially it does come down to what constitutes a reasonable adjustment. So if you're looking at a student who perhaps have a diagnosis of an anxiety disorder, and the adjustment may be that that student needs to take breaks throughout the day, so that student has a method to communicate. They need to take a break, it might be a break card that they flash up to the teacher, and then they, they can take as much time as is agreed upon outside the classroom. However, that, and that is a reasonable adjustment, however, in implementing that, you do need to consider the supervision of the student as well. So that then becomes a staffing and resourcing issue, because is there a staff member, a teacher, available to then supervise that student maybe from a distance? So that becomes a consideration in how we provide that. For example, augmented communication strategies as well, so I have quite a bit of experience with augmented communication systems, PEX and iPad high-tech, which are reasonable, should be implemented, however, do require training, and they require, they can be resource-heavy in supporting the student to learn the augmented systems within a classroom. The one that I'm particularly familiar with actually requires two staff members to assist the student to learn in the initial stages, and then you progressively reduce the prompts and the support as they grow their independence. However, in, in the schools that I've worked in, there are two staff members in the classroom. So if both of those staff members are working with that student to learn the augmented communication system, who's watching the other students in the class, who's teaching the other students in the class while that is going on? So these are all considerations that have to be made on a local level, and in the context of an under-resourced and understaffed public education system. So that's where we get that, that confusion and that back and forward about what constitutes a reasonable adjustment for these students. It's not an unwillingness to provide that adjustment, it's whether or not there is the capacity to provide that adjustment in the system as it currently stands.
Thank you. We often have this, I guess when we, you know, people talk about, for example, ending restricted practices or preventing exclusions and suspensions of kids with disability, there is a very obvious and reasonable response that we sometimes hear from teachers that is, well, if you do that tomorrow, then we're just not going to cope, it's going to actually be dangerous for kids, or the, you know, some other reason, and I personally think that's completely acceptable. But if we were to look at a goal, you know, say 10 years' time, where we are trying to get to a fully inclusive school system, what would we be doing now to prepare for that, do you think, before?
So, one of the, well, the most highly-resourced area would be SSPs and support classes, because of the size of the classes and the supervision and educators and the teachers who work with those students. So I'm not going to talk about them, I'm going to talk about some of the people, and it's correct that those students have great levels of resourcing, though a whole other conversation is what is missing in that, in that part of the system as well. But if we were to talk about students in the mainstream, the 86% of students with disability who are in the mainstream of the total, that's an area of under-resourcing. So, for example, if a student has a mental health diagnosis that manifests as externalising behaviours...
if a student has a mental health diagnosis that manifests as externalising behaviours, and they are in the mainstream because of the way that manifests or the, or the type of need, or perhaps the student has been able to find a place because there isn't a place resourced in a support class where they would get maybe seven students and two adults, one of them being a teacher, so more one-to-one support in that environment. So if that is not available and they are in the mainstream, then the resourcing support might be through the learning and support teacher, which we talked about in our submission, and some time with them. But the learning and support teachers are covering a whole bunch of students in the mainstream setting. And they may also get a student, sorry, an adult who is a learning support assistant or an S L S O to support their education. But it might be that in, that person intellectually is able to access the syllabuses and the curriculum, but the mental health diagnosis is sometimes getting in the way or their, or their need is, is getting in the way of them being able to learn. So we actually need people who have qualifications in, we call it behaviour. But in the system, a while ago, we used to have itinerant support teachers, for instance, who used to be allocated a caseload, like we have itinerant support teachers for vision impaired or hearing impaired students. We used to have behaviour ones too, who might come in and do additional support and work with that student on learning how to self-manage and help that student to manage themselves in the mainstream, for example. So there are provisions of specialist teacher type that need to expand in the system so that kids can access their education and learn about themselves and develop as well, I would say. Emma, do you want to add to that?
The question itself actually dealt with, I feel, two separate entities. One was the reduction and elimination of restrictive practices and the behaviour policy, the suspension and expulsion, which is a separate matter to creating inclusive environments in, in terms of what you were referring to. I believe that Natasha has effectively answered the question in terms of the inclusion aspect. In terms of the reduction and elimination of restrictive practices and, and suspension and expulsion, I refer back to, to my previous answer regarding the complexities of providing the adjustments and the proactive support. In order to reduce the need for suspension and expulsion, there needs to be adequate proactive support for these students to meet their complex needs. We're talking about students who may, because a need is being unmet because of the un-resourced, under-resourced system, apologies, may be exhibiting those challenging behaviours, which may then result in safety concerns for those around them. In order to reduce that prior to, as in the past, prior to attempting to cap the amount of suspensions that are possible, there needs to be a significant increase in funding and resourcing that will allow teachers and enable teachers to adequately meet the needs of these students. And again, it's not an unwillingness. It's, there is no capacity in these situations. And if that was achieved, there would be significant reduction in the need for those reactive strategies to be used.
So to answer the question about what would need to be changing over the next, or what we should be looking forward to, we should be looking forward to a system that has specialist itinerant support teachers of different types to go in and support students and their teachers so that they can be included in the setting that they're in. We also need to have more support class places because we have students who just can't cope in the mainstream depending on their need and sometimes, well, and their diagnosis. So those students need access to a smaller setting. If you have a support class of seven students, for instance, in a mainstream setting, and you have students who are there, let's say a student has been, is, has autism, that student might struggle most with writing, for instance. And so English, history, all the writing-based subject areas that they need to access might be highly differentiated and scaffolded down in a very individualised way in a support class in a mainstream high school, for example. But that same student might also have a real passion for chemistry and mathematics and a very high-level ability to, to do abstraction, which is, you know, perfect for a student of mathematics and perhaps chemistry as well. So that student might then be able to go into mainstream classes within a mainstream school. But what level of resourcing support goes with that student so they can access the mainstream teaching that's absent perhaps from that class of seven, that's not resourced well. So we need to, if we actually care about students achieving their learning outcomes that they're capable of, and we're tailoring the system around the individualised needs of a young person, then we actually need to look at on-tap resourcing that allows them to do that. Because a mainstream setting or classroom for a student with autism can be a very overwhelming experience, and the teacher may well be doing adjustments to try and hold that student in. But on, depending on the student and their needs, that can be something that's not attainable for them. However, having an adult who goes with them, who's trained in the subject, understands autism, their itinerant support teacher perhaps, and is able to move with that student as an additional resource to help them access their education and achieve learning outcomes on par with their peers in that area of the curriculum, that's not available and that should be made available. So there is lots of things that are missing and students are just having to cope.
Thank you. It's incredibly helpful. Mr D Adam?
Hi. Thanks for your submission. I wanted to ask about individual learning plans. I know in your submission you referred to a comment made by Georgina Harrison about an expectation that every student with a disability would have an individualised learning plan. And given that the figures in the submission suggest two hundred thousand plus students with a disability in the New South Wales public education system, how realistic is it that we can expect those individual, those learning plans to be in place?
So in your ideal world, with the right level of resourcing, having an individual plan for every child with a disability would be appropriate. The problem is the level of resourcing, not the idea that a learning plan isn't a good activity to do. So given that we have had an explosion in the number of students over the last, you know, as the, our submission talks about, decade or so, what it actually means, can I just, I'm thinking about the reality. We visited a school a couple of weeks ago. It was a mainstream school. We have two learning and support teachers who are qualified teachers who have specialised in students with disability. And the reality for those teachers is that that's all they do. They do individualised learning plans. And the actual teaching work that kids in the mainstream are getting at that school is with the support, the S L S Os. So the actual teaching work of the teacher is spent doing the, the planning work and the actual education of the students in the mainstream with a disability. Those students are getting the support for the disability with somebody without a teaching qualification, for example. And that's not a criticism of the S L S Os, but it's the, it's what happens when you under-resource. The students aren't getting the teacher with a qualified, qualification to help them with their particular need, putting all their time into that, they're doing the paperwork. So that's the, the major issue with that. It's not that any teacher objects to individualised planning. It's just that the resourcing and the time for it is just not there. Because ideally, the planning document is to talk to the student and to the parent and to plan around the student so the student is getting what they need. That's the idea of such a thing. But actually, in implementing it in a, in a large secondary school, for example, or a large primary school or any mainstream school for that matter, the time is just not inside the resourcing of the school. So the staffing entitlement for the school hasn't gone up for that sort of thing to happen. So when Georgina said that, I believe that they did change practices because the secretary at the time said that. What I think was meant by that is that students in support classes and S S Ps should have one. But the problem is now we have kids in the mainstream on different types of funding who are now all expected to have one. So low-level adjustment for disability, that's been extrapolated to everybody having one, which just is, is an activity that people haven't got time to do. And even if they are doing it, say on a school development day, start of the year, we'll do it once, it might not be revisited. And it certainly doesn't, it's not a place, it's not a document, any useful document to ongoingly support those students.
And so is there any R F F or any relief time provided when a teacher has to develop an individual learning plan?
Only, not in addition, given the explosion of the numbers and the increased pressure on the system and the concentrations of students with disability that are in the public system and not in other systems and other sectors. So no, but that is what our Gallup inquiry is partly saying, is the reduction of face-to-face teaching hours that is needed for the profession of two hours a week across the board is partly to do some of this more complex work. Because, you know, the understanding of what disabilities are and how we adjust for them has grown over a couple of decades. But the commensurate resourcing in the system to provide space and time for the biggest investment in the system, which is the classroom teacher, to be able to make adjustments and make meaning out of that is, is not, is not there. So that, that's, that's the issue really.
I understand that, that the individual learning plans get signed off by the teacher, the classroom teacher. I suppose in the previous session, we had a number of advocacy law firms talking about the cases that they ran. And I think they cited one case where there'd been a failure to implement the individualised learning plan. I suppose I'm concerned about sort of where the sort of onus lies in terms of the implementation of the teachers who clearly don't have the resources, carry the can for that kind of failure when the plans don't get properly implemented. Can you make, offer some comment about that?
I, I can. You can, is it all right? I'm going to offer a comment. The comment I would make is that it's, it's just everything we've said already, to be honest with you. The onus should be on the system, provide the resources around the organism that is a classroom. Whether there are seven kids in the classroom with one teacher because it's a support class in a, in a support unit on a mainstream school, or four students in an S S P in a particular class of students of a particular need. The onus has to be on the system to, because the expectation of doing individualised planning is, is, you know, that, that sounds, that is wonderful. Except that the resourcing has to be there for that important work to happen. So we have to create the enabling conditions around the students and their teachers so that students are given the possibility to get the best out of their teacher. So the teacher has the time, in this example, to do the planning that's very specific around a student with very specific and individualised needs. So the, the system really does have to provide the space and time because, just going back to our opening remarks, we are the system that educates the vast majority of students with disability, and the vast majority of students with disability are in a mainstream setting where there is no additional resourcing with a teacher that is adequate to, to do that type of work.
Quiet, because I know the time's running.
Thank you. Mrs Mitchell?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for appearing today and for your submission. I wanted to ask, a couple of the things I wanted to ask have already been covered by other committee members. But in the submission, you talk a little bit about the review at a federal level, the better and fairer education system. And obviously, one of the recommendations in that from the expert panel is around this idea of full-service schools where you have better integration of sort of allied health and other services. Does the Federation have a view on that particular recommendation, noting that you've talked a bit about needing those itinerant support teachers? But obviously, resourcing would be critical. But do you think the concept of those service schools is one that is worth government pursuing?
Yeah, so we would say that allied health, there's qualifications and expertise in allied health that could certainly benefit the education of young people. The coordination of that to, to honour the work in a classroom that supports the students and their teacher properly is one of the challenges we're facing. I visited a school in Taree about three weeks ago. And in that school, I think they had about eighty allied health professionals wanting to work with the students in the school. And that was just untenable for the school because the school, again, is not set up for that in that way. Because a school day, as most of you would know, it starts on that bell and finishes on that bell. And kids are, are doing all the things in between, and the teachers are doing all the things that they do with the kids in between. So how you put into that eighty-odd allied health people who oversee a term, want to see that, you know, through the N D S funding, they want to see the people they're working with from the families who've, who've approached them. That's just not tenable. So one of the things that we would suggest is that we need to have those types of professionals employed through government and there are coordinated approach at a systems level so that it was appropriately accessed. The other thing we would say about that too, though, is there are some allied health professionals, for example, and this is, not all disabilities are the same, of course. So one of the ones that people find very challenging to talk about is students who have large externalising behaviours that, you know, people call behaviour, right? So mental health diagnoses that go with big externalising behaviours. So students like that, their parents may have found a person who has a behaviour qualification. But a student's behaviour in a particular setting, like all of, like all human beings, our behaviour in settings is reflective of the setting. So we're behaving quite well, Emma and I here today. But it doesn't mean we always sit and behave quite like this. So like everybody here, so the idea that somebody can come in and understand each specific setting because they have a qualification of a certain type that's part of an allied health qualification, there is a gap in the ideas there. So this is once again, understanding that schools are about educating young people, including students with disability, and understanding that the resourcing level, whether it's in a S S P or a unit, class or in the mainstream, all these settings would require a very coordinated and thought-out approach to how allied health work in those settings. And, and in addition, the qualifications of those people. So in, in the public system, we, and the Teachers' Federation is known, and it's in our submission, we, dual-qualified school counsellors matters because school counselling in the public system is about counselling to support them in their education. And so having a teaching qualification and a psychology qualification really does matter because the councillor is often working with the teachers to help them make adjustments or understand the students' need as well alongside learning and support teachers, for example. And that's really, really important because if a person just has a psychology background and they're used to private practice and they counsel in private practice, you know, a child of three, you know, and that's a specialisation, transferring that into a high school, which could happen, and they're dealing with a sixteen-year-old with very, you know, with much, with, with, in a different developmental situation and different needs, it's not transferable necessarily because we're in an institution, say, a mainstream high school, and the, the student is sixteen years old and their needs are not the same and their developmental stage is not the same as this three-year-old and this, this other experience that that person might have. So it's very similar, say with, the other thing I just mentioned, because I've gone off a little tangent there. But if I, if I was just to say, speech pathologists also. So we know that speech pathologists or speeches are very helpful, especially in the early years as we start to understand, say, speech and language disorders in, in young people. They can often perhaps work in a school to document the need, but that doesn't necessarily then translate to giving the teacher the time to understand that and translate that into support for the students in the classroom, you know. So there's a gap in that as well. Do you want to add?
I just want to add that while we initially support, we would have to insist upon appropriate consultation with the profession if that was to be established for all the reasons that Natasha just listed. Schools are very complex places and students could benefit from that link with their allied health services, absolutely. But it needs to be workable within a school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's all we have time for. To the extent we have further questions, we'll put them to you in writing. And the secretary will be in touch in relation to how to respond to those. But thank you again for your submission and for your very interesting. Um, but thank you again for your submission and for your very interesting, um, and, um, valuable, uh, insights today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Getting settled, just for the committee's benefit to let you know that I'll be going to Mrs. Natasha McCarron-Jones first and then going backwards, uh, in reverse order to what we just did, that everyone gets a go. Okay. Um, I now welcome our next witness. Um, if I could ask you to please state your name and position, title, and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Lynne Caden and I'm the Assistant Secretary of the IUA New South Wales ACT Branch. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. And do you have a short opening statement that you'd like to read?
I do. If, could I beg your indulgence? We didn't provide a written statement. So if it's a little bit longer than two or three minutes, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to begin by, by, um, saying that the Independent Education Union of Australia welcomes the opportunity uh, to provide feedback regarding the review of children and young people with a disability in New South Wales educational settings. The IU New South Wales branch is part of a federal registered union representing all employees in Catholic and other uh, faith-based community and independent schools, early childhood education, care centres, post-secondary centres across all states and territories. And while that is the case, the majority of our IUA members are teachers and the members, uh, also include employees such as teacher assistants, administrative staff, right down to gardeners, cleaners and caterers, of course. So our current membership is about thirty-one thousand members across New South Wales and we consistently engage in industrial and educational, um, debate, both at a national and state level through our education and industrial committees. To realise the full and transformative, um, power of education requires broad and deep attention to the lived reality of practitioners. And I'm sure you've heard that over and over today. The oversimplification of many complex issues within the educational context when discussing students with a particular attribute or attributes is to be avoided. Indeed, teacher unions and associations are the voice of the profession. The union acknowledges the integrity and the quality of the consultation and the analysis that has been and is being provided to us through this process. The union has been, um, heavily involved over a long time with disability discrimination and, um, obviously the disability standards for education two thousand and five, DSE. We played a role in the development of those standards and provided submissions in the subsequent reviews, uh, in two thousand and twenty and the review of the disability standards for education mapping and teaching and school leadership frameworks in November two thousand and twenty-one. The, the, the aim, of course, of the DSE is to ensure that students with disability can access and participate in education on the same basis as students without disability, and that goes without saying, of course. And that the, um, the DSE is, is reviewed regularly every five years and we appreciate the opportunity to be involved. As a general statement, um, we strongly support this review, given that it's crucial for ensuring the access that I've referred to earlier and the, the inquiry demonstrates a commitment to addressing any gaps and challenges in this area. The review typically examines various aspects of disability support, including accessibility, um, edu-, of educational facilities, availability, avail-, sorry, availability of specialised resources and, and assistance, training for educators and effective, the effectiveness of existing policies and legislation. Of course, we're, the aim is to identify improvement through our educational journeys. So how? The, um, you've, I've, obviously in our previous, your previous speaker, um, was talking about individualized education plans. And similar to public schools and non-government schools develop IEPs or ILPs or whatever you'd like to refer them to for individual students. Now, these plans outline, um, students' needs and goals and accommodations and support services. And they are tailored to the individual students. Um, one of the things we are concerned about is the definition of reasonable adjustments in the context of the NCCD and the NDIS. And it, um, it's a major consideration, particularly with tiers one, two and three. The IU strongly supports the current practices and management of students involved in inclusive education programmes and plans in our schools. So currently at the moment, um, twenty percent of our, of our students, I do refer them to as ours, um, our Catholic systemic schools and independent schools, there are five hundred and ninety-two of them in eleven dioceses. And twenty percent of those students are identified with an identified disability. And that goes somewhere, way to the issue with the NCCD and the QDTP students, which, uh, are not necessarily, um, identified in the same way. The, um, the NCCD, of course, is an instrument that's used to collect data on Australian school students with disability. The process used to collect, verify and store this data has been many and varied. And often our schools, um, it, unlike the government sector, have had some very, very comprehensive and, and I'm not suggesting that the government sector don't have comprehensive documentation, more to the point that we, the data through our surveys that we, we found over a period of time was, was excessive, um, to the point that some of those ILPs were up to nineteen pages in length on average. And that was a directive from one of our employers. So, um, and it was duplicative as much as anything else. So the, um, as part of that, to just, to address that, in two thousand and twenty-one, we worked with, um, the Department of Education in response to many reports about workload and, and time issues. And we identified through that survey that there was work intensification, which of course was, um, was exacerbated by inadequate staffing and release time. And that, of course, then flows onto an impact, a negative impact on the support for students. And there was duplication of data requirements and deficiencies in the platforms that were being used in order to register those, those documents. As a result, we've negotiated for the use of all, uh, non-government schools across Australia, a document which is a fact sheet which talks about what's necessary and what's not necessary. So instead of energy being put into, um, creating documentation, it, it spends more time where teachers and, and the sports staff in those classes are spending time with the kids rather than, um, creating documentation, which quite often is, as suggested earlier, um, shelved and not, not referenced in the way it should be, and they are absolutely important. Um, it also, we, we'd suggest in order to deal with this that there should be a centralised toolkit or repository for, um, curated resources collated to address specific learning needs and adjustments. Part of the problem that we have is the recreation and reproduction of document, uh, of resources and things that, that, um, an individual teacher or sometimes a collective group of learning support team create and recreate. And that would, that would, um, also give a standard guideline for adjustments and clear guidance on the levels of adjustment. Um, what other things are, are very important? Special education teachers and support staff, I mean, all of our non-government schools have some capacity to employ special education teachers and, and their teams. Um, they're specialised and they, uh, obviously provide assistance with assessing the curriculum and support for social and emotional development, but we don't have enough of them and those we have are exhausted. Infrastructure and facilities, accommodations, many non-government schools may not have adequate infrastructure. And of course, when you think about our scope of schools, we have the very, 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 those that are perceived to be very, very wealthy and those that are, are supporting intimate and for want of a better word boutique, um, uh, wider school communities just by the very nature of where they're located. So of course, physical, um, accommodations are usually reasonably easy to, uh, uh, achieve. And that could be, you know, extra bathrooms, adaptive technology, hearing aids and FM systems, et cetera. But they, um, sometimes they are costly for our schools and particularly if they're, they're, um, isolated due to geographic or, or the resource disparities. The challenge particularly in remote and regional schools is a support for the student via having access, the whole student having access to the allied professionals and, uh, to work with them, addressing the emotional, social and psychological needs by tailing strategies to foster our students' cognitive motive and sensory skills. Distance and therefore isolation are the enemy of every child with, with a disability and quite often these children are more likely to experience neglect and abuse. Small class sizes, individuals, individualised attention and the tension of mainstreaming students in this context. Given that ninety percent of students with a disability and attend a mainstream school, the focus must be on inclusion, keeping in mind that inclusion is not about location but about belonging. Uh, indeed, our Catholic schools, it's ninety-eight percent mainstream with specialist settings co-located with local mainstream school. They're local mainstream school or they can, they're, um, quite often involved in satellite classes. Our Aspect schools who work with students on the autism spectrum have smaller class sizes compared to other schools, running at between six and nine students with three adults in the room for the most part. This allows for a more individualized attention and support for these students. Aspect teachers and learning support ratios are better to cater for each student's needs, but we can do more. Uh, the majority of language of the Royal Commission, particularly in, uh, recommended, recommendation seven fourteen, seven fifteen, referring to specialist schools as segregation is far from the lived experience of the families that we speak to, um, who feel that they have a profound sense of inclusion and these schools rarely operate in isolation from their wider education community. There's a limited access to external, um, specialists and, and I'm sure you've heard that, such as speech therapists, occupational psychologists, et cetera, and that's particularly bad. We have situations in many of our Catholic schools where in kindergarten, for example, the, um, teacher will identify in the first case of testing in the first couple of weeks that there is a potential need for an assessment and they will literally ask parents to book, um, access to a counsellor or whoever is the appropriate professional to support them and it's usually nine months before they see someone. So we, we see that this is a major problem. Um, under the Shattuck review, a number of years ago in the ACT, the suggestion of hub access and sharing of resources has, has, um, has some merit in, in consideration. Um, the professional development of staff across our, our, um, staffing in, in all of our schools, their needs, and certainly there was an article today in, um, from UNSW about the course that they're running and the need for professional staff development, which is applied to all staff, both as they travel through or, um, throughout their career. But particularly in, in, um, our pre-service teachers.
Parental involvement collaboration. Is there much more?
Sorry.
Sorry, just, I'm trying to get a, a time indication of how much you've got to go.
Nearly there. I've just, I want, I'll just give points because I'm sure you've heard most of them.
Thank you. That's right. People are eager to ask questions. Go ahead.
Um, sorry.
You're okay.
Um, parental involvement, major thing about parental involvement is we have to give opportunities for parents to be involved. And denial is one of, and, um, parent grief is a major issue. They, having a parent accept that there is a recommendation for an assessment is quite often quite traumatic. The, um, transition into post-grad school leadership and resources, I've already spoken to restrictive practice, of course. Um, the ACT have, and Victoria, um, have the senior practitioners and it is a very, very successful and useful way of eliminating and minimising restrictive practices in a proactive way. They support, um, by intervention prior to the, that being a problem. So what are we recommending? Define reasonable adjustments, um, access to support and consultation, access to health and wellbeing specialists. Issues around English as a second language for a lot of our, our parents who, that's a challenge. Um, and more support during the enrolment process, more information and access, release time for teachers in order to do what they do best. Um, more assistance for families of First Nations students and, and of course, funding. It comes down to the, the resourcing through the present funding levels and a review of that. And for our schools, the concept of choice and control, it's, um, is essential in addressing inclusive educational outcomes for our students. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I do, I do appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
No worries. Um, so we've only got, I think we've got fifteen minutes really. Um, so I'll go, um, to, uh, Mrs. McCarron-Jones, then to Mr. D. Adam online. I'll then check in with Ms. Mahalik online and come back to myself. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, and also, uh, if you do have a written submission, um, that you, you're more than welcome to be able to table that or, or launch something else if there was anything that is missed. Um, I just wanted to, and you touched on it very briefly, uh, in relation to some of the recommendations from the Royal Commission, in particular, recommendation, uh, seven point one five, um, in relation to achieving inclusion and retaining choice. I'm interested in your perspective in relation to the recommendation around having, um, uh, mainstream schools and non-mainstream schools, um, located in close proximity, but also, um, allowing for students from, from both schools to participate, particularly socially, um, through different means and whether or not that's feasible.
I, absolutely. And I have lived that myself as a teacher in that capacity. Um, the, the most important thing is, as I said, a sense of belonging. And there are specific needs of individual students where there may be behavioural matters rather than, sorry. So one, one of the problems we have in some of our classrooms is the ability to diagnose some students and have an assessment and provide support for them. And then in other situations, there is obviously a challenge to their learning and they have particular attributes. But there's no capacity for that to have any kind of funding or resourcing around it except that, that, that can be, um, organised within the school capacity. So to have, to broaden the scope, to have mainstreaming and to have individual designated specific, um, locations or, or, uh, facilities which then can be interchanged or students can move in and out of is very beneficial as long as it's, as long as it's coordinated and addressed in a way that looks to what the students need. That sounds very vague.
Yeah.
But, but it really, mainstreaming and co-location can work and it can work very well. Uh, it's a question of the how.
And I'm mindful of time, but I've just got one other in relation to, um, the independent learning, um, plans that you touched on. Um, I know that, um, it is a requirement that all, all students have that. Um, but we do know and we hear evidence of other things that it, it's not occurring. But I'm interested to know and get some insight as to why is that? Is it purely just a time factor or there are other, um, things preventing those plans being implemented and developed?
In our, um, sector, it was, there is an expectation of what is a reasonable adjustment and how that is then documented. And that, of course, was one of the reasons we developed the fact sheet because, as I suggested, we were getting nineteen-page documents, which in and of themselves were not helpful because it was duplication and the time that was spent to produce that document for, say, twenty or thirty kids that you might have as a secondary teacher in, in your, um, load is significant. And so there's a time factor, absolutely, but it's the relevant, relevance. Teachers will produce something that is usable, feasible and you can, and you can take to the classroom or you can speak to a parent and you know, and it's a. you can speak to a parent and you know, and it's a living document. So it's never, it never becomes a static document that it's put on the shelf and put away and that's, it feels like just compliance and ticking a box is what, what was, has been happening for a lot of teachers. And you find then that they regenerate or replicate something that already exists which is not valuable to anyone.
Thank you.
Mr D Adam.
Hi, I've just got one question. Earlier in the session, we had a number of stakeholders suggest that, that the exemption for non-government schools from the Anti-Discrimination Act with respect to disability should be removed. I just wanted to get the position of the union in relation to that proposition.
There are significant challenges, as you can imagine, with the Anti-Discrimination Act. And there should, there, our perception is that the Act should be revoked in, in all its capacities really because it doesn't do anyone any favours. And as, we have a significant number of students that are in our schools with challenges and attributes that need to be addressed and supported. So, any, in any situation where discrimination is allowed to occur is not, is not acceptable. Does that answer your question?
I think so, when you say revoked, you mean that the exemption should be revoked?
Well, there should be no exemption.
There no exemption, right, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't very articulate.
Sorry, I think, I think we were all worried you meant the entire Anti-Discrimination Act should be revoked.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, this, no, definitely not.
It is problematic, but yes.
Yes.
Could I ask, I understand that we collect data for public schools in relation to the numbers of suspensions and expulsions, et cetera, but that we don't have that data from non-government schools. Is that something that the schools, you know, that your schools actually put together in any way, is there any data collection of, with that kind?
Given the, the broad scope of our employers and we have diocesan employers, so there are something similar, of course, to how things are, these processes are conducted. Certainly at a diocesan level, yes, absolutely, our Catholic systemic schools would do that. With regard to individual standalone schools, they would, they would complete that documentation, but as to how they share it, there would potentially, and I might get in trouble for saying this, there may be potentially a concern that it would be, there would be reputational damage in sharing that, but the union's position has always been, and certainly we've been involved with the process where, where this has been adopted in the ACT and I was involved in that process, that, that there should be no reason for that exemption to exist.
Because I think we hear a lot about the idea that obviously with more resources you, you tend to get better outcomes, we talk about the sort of two-tier system between the public and private, but without that data, it's very hard for us to know if for children of disability there are better outcomes with more resources or not. So, so, so the union's position would be that that should be able to be collected and...
If there's a facility that makes it fair and just for all, then it, there's an expectation we're, we're supporting students and our teachers and, and that data may well be very helpful in, in helping them address any concerns they have. I think one of the issues we have is with behavioural matters, so for example, while not trying to identify any particular challenge that some of our students have, but ADD and ODD and ADHD are all, create situations for teachers and principals and learning support staff that the current resourcing in and around their support is, is very limited and it, it's something that needs to be addressed because there's an issue about time. So if you've got a classroom of kids and you've got a child who has a particular behavioural challenge, it's the time to deal with that appropriately then that overflows potentially sometimes into restrictive practice, incidentally, not deliberately so, but seclusion or, or whatever that might look like. And then you've got the rest of the class to consider as well. So, anywhere where the reporting in whatever capacity is able to collect data which is useful and relevant, we would support.
I'll just check if anyone else has a question before I continue because it seems like we've got more time now than we thought we would, which is great. So, I guess you, you know, the employer schools that you're looking after are quite different in terms of, we have obviously very, some very rich independent schools and we also have some not that significantly well-off independent and Catholic schools, so there's a, there's a wide variety there. In a, in the private system, what does it look like when things are working well for children with disability? What, what's in place that really makes the difference?
If I think about our Catholic systemic schools, because they fall most in line and I think it's easier for people to identify with, with regard to the government sector, we would say that the Catholic sector is most probably disadvantaged to a certain extent in, in being able to provide the support that they would wish to, to do so. So, when, so what does a successful presentation look like for our, how would you select, for example, a school where you feel that your child with a disability is going to be looked after? Well, I suppose the first thing I would be saying is a successful school has an induction process or an introduction process which is inclusive and caring and transparent. And then there is the, the need for access to the allied health support and then well-trained staff who, who are cognisant but also adept at dealing with whatever attributes the children in their class and they are varied. And then the resourcing for the ongoing support for the development of that child. So, it's, it's, it's complex and, and I don't think, while many of our schools do a really good job, I would never say that it was perfect and there's always room for improvement and, and resourcing is one of the most important ones, whether it's physical or monetary or other.
A final question from me then, in terms of the union's approach to a transitioned approach to ending segregation in schools so that we end up with a, you know, the idea of ending up with truly inclusive education, what is the union's position on that?
In representing our schools, I would suggest that we have, we don't see it as segregation per se in the first instance and we have seen lots of, of examples of how a, an independent and directed approach or organisation within the capacity of the, the wider area of the main school to kind of to create a precinct or a space where they can share, have shared facilities and we've got many of the schools, particularly our Catholic and ASPECT schools, they have run, they run satellites both in early learning and, and so forth and that works very well, both in the playground and, and as I said, personally I have taught in those, in those spaces and, and I see that as a really positive thing. So, I think moving everyone into a mainstream is not going to be the answer. It's not, I don't think it addresses the needs of the students in a way that I would see and that would be the union's position. There should be about choice, so that, and choice and control for the parents to choose where they think their students should, should attend school.
Thank you, that's incredibly useful. Sorry, yes, Mr McLaren.
Just on that, it's, it's an interesting contribution because it kind of gives you like a practical way forward, but how, in terms of choice though, how does that work with, how does that interface with the parent's choice work with teachers, for example? Like how would that, what would be that hierarchy of ultimately how would the decision get made? Because obviously the parents might have a different perspective to teachers in an environment like that, so how, how would that pan out?
Okay, so I'm, I'm not quite sure of your question.
Didn't you say that there would be, it's not, it's not practical to have full integration always, therefore you have these kind of spaces.
Satellites.
Satellites, was the description, yeah. So, in order to give parents choice, I think was your, was your, but then, does that mean that if a child is, or a, a person with a disability is problematic in the teacher's view, does that mean that the parents would still get to decide that they... I'm just trying to work out where the decision-making process would lie, that's all.
The decision lies with the parent. So if the parent chooses that they're going to, say we've got a school called St Pat's and if a parent decides that they want to enrol their child in St Pat's, there's no capacity for them to be refused and nor would they. Our, our faith-based schools are inclusive in that capacity. If they were then arrived at the school, and this is where, I suppose what I was speaking to with the introduction to the school, the conversation, the transparency, what's available, so that the parent makes an informed choice about where they would like their child to go. If they've got older siblings or something, they're, all of those things are considerations of, of course. So, it is, if the, the child comes first and the parents then have that capacity in our schools to, to decide where they'd like to enrol their child, no child would be rejected on, in that capacity. So there's no question of segregation as in you go over there because, a, a, a school might say, look, we've got this capacity, if you come to our school, we can do this and you will then be able to use the facilities or the capacities of this school which is on-site and we share and these are the kind of, of interactions or, or activities that we do together in order to support our students, but no student would be rejected.
No, but the parent could ultimately say, well, no, I want full integration, like I don't want the satellite option.
Yeah, that, well, that would be negotiated and it's about what's best for the child.
Yeah.
And I'm certain that that is what happens in our schools. And if I'm wrong, I'm in trouble. But I'm, I am, no, I was being silly, but yes, they, it's really important that...
And that, in your view, that model is, that's working?
Yes, I can say hand on heart, I've observed it on many occasions.
And how ubiquitous is it, like is it, is it everywhere or is it not in enough places or do we need to?
I think it really does depend on the nature of the community that they're establishing. There, there's always room for improvement if we think about some of our remote and isolated schools where they don't have that option and they'd like it. So, it's hard to, to, to give a blanket answer to that given to the diversity of our schools and, and the locations.
So, bottom line is, is that that's the exemplar and it should be rolled out across the system?
I wouldn't go that far. What I, not, not because it's not a great model, but that would be like me saying that every child in a Jewish school should attend a Catholic, it, it, it just doesn't work in our sector. It would be irresponsible for me to say that, to make that as a call. But the premise that there should, that there should be choice and there, there should be options and that that should be facilitated is really important. I know that's a very fluffy answer, but that's, I think that's the, the best answer I could give you.
Thanks.
Thank you, unfortunately that's all we have time for. Thank you so much for coming today and yes, please feel free to tender the, sorry, to table the speech, not speech, the opening statement. To the extent there are questions, supplementary questions, we will be in touch, but that brings this session to an end, thank you. Now welcome our next witnesses, starting from my left, if you could please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Thank you. My name is Miss Julianne Bond, I work for the Public Service Association as Industrial Manager. On the oath I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Good afternoon, my name is Troy Wright, I'm the Acting General Secretary of the Public Services Association. I solemnly, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Just to note, before I ask if you've got an opening statement, just to note that Mr D Adam has, is an apology, has had to, to leave unfortunately, but we have Mrs Mitchell and Ms Mahalik still online. Do you have a short opening statement that you'd like to read?
I do, thank you Chair. Thank you to the Chair and the Committee for the opportunity to appear today and also the opportunity to provide a submission. I'd also like to, on behalf of the Association, thank the Committee for its patience in our submission which we acknowledge was held up due to factors beyond our control. For those familiar with the Association, we are a union, a state-registered union with forty thousand members across the state public sector. Among those are many, many thousand members, approximately, I think, eight at least employed in the Department of Education. And among that eight thousand members are many, many school learning support officers who are the employees directly responsible for the integration or the supervision of children with a disability in our state schools. Our message on behalf of those members to the Committee is one to please say, take a breath. They feel overwhelmed, the pace of change in their area of work has been probably at best described as dynamic, at worst probably described as chaotic and they feel stretched and they hold great fears that the value, very valuable work of the Committee today and, and over the coming weeks will result in more change when they're struggling to keep up with the previous ones. They are stretched for a number of reasons and the Committee would, I'm sure, have, as we do, the department's latest statistical bulletin, albeit from 2022. And if you look at that, you can see there's been exponential growth year on year since nineteen ninety-six when statistics began of children with disability in the departments, Department of Education's work. Every single year, children with disability have increased, whereas the general student population has risen and fallen during that time and children with disability have become an increasing proportion of the children in school and as such, an increasing focus of our members' work. The moves this year or late last year by the department to ensure permanency for a large number of our members have been gratefully received by our members and go some of the way to stave off the stress. But whilst the Committee's terms of reference are very broad, I really wanted to come here today, we really wanted to come here today on behalf of our members and concentrate on four issues that for them are paramount, wanted, they wanted brought to the Committee's attention. Number one of those issues is that the training and personal development, which has been something that has dropped off for them and they feel desperately in need of. They seek to be recognised as professionals, they know that the work they do is extremely valuable, not just to the children they support, but to the community as a whole and the education system, yet often they feel like they are treated like the poor brother or poor sister of the department where they are the professionals in the organisation and don't receive the same attention as our teacher colleagues do. Number two is a, what is already a difficult job has been made very difficult by the absence of a particular policy that they're particularly concerned with and that, that is the restrictive practices policy which directly relates to some of the terms of reference of the Committee. There was to be a restrictive practices policy introduced. There was to be a restrictive practices policy introduced this year. Um, it was put off by the department in April last year and has been put back for introduction in term one next year. Our members are gravely concerned. This leaves both them in, as individuals and workers and the department in a potential black hole of liability where they're unsure of their roles and responsibilities and unsure where what they're supposed to practise in the event of, um, a difficult behavioural episode by a student. And my colleague, uh, Industrial Manager Julie Bond has examples of this that we can, um, explain to the, the Committee if required. Um, number three is the introduction of a, a, what's a Student Learning Support Officer. Uh, I've got to get the acronym correct, Student Health Support Officer. Um, with the increasing number of children with disabilities in schools, we're seeing an increasing number of those children with very complex medical needs, very complex health needs that require treatment during the school day. And currently again, we have an issue where our star, our members feel grossly unqualified and untrained a lot of the time to perform those duties. Um, there's been an introduction of a position which, yes, as I said, is called the Student Health Support Officer. There aren't enough of those positions and our members have grave concerns about the volume of training that position gets when it's actually performing some rather complex medical tasks. The fourth issue is obviously probably one that's been before the Committee a fair bit in its dealings already, and that's about infrastructure. Our members are concerned about the um, lag in infrastructure to accommodate children with disabilities. And finally, what we wanted just to say in our opening statement was what we are witnessing as their union, and it's a trend right across the department, is these stresses are resulting in a massive increase in workers' compensation claims by our members, either through physical or psychological injury. Um, by our calculations from the department's own figures, and I hope it has been brought to the Committee's attention before today. But there was a thirty-four percent increase in workers' compensation claims in the last financial year. Um, that is for us a clear demonstration that something is going wrong for employees in the department. And we would suggest, based on our anecdotal experience, that a large number of those claims are coming from our membership. And it's because of the issues that we've presented today. We're happy to take some questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll just ask one quick one before handing over to, um, Mrs. Mitchell online if she's, um, if she's wanting to ask questions. Oh wait, sorry, we'll go to, um, Miss Natasha, uh, Natasha McLaren-Jones first. Um, I just wanted to get some examples of those complex medical needs requiring treatment. Can you give some examples of, of what that looks like?
Very happy to. And it's something I'm, I've had to go to some documents provided by the department, if you can. Um, bear my, bear my cumbersome, um, explanation. A Student Learning Support Officer within their job description. So just to go back a little bit in time to give a bit of context, in twenty nineteen, the Association was successful in winning and settling a large pay equity case on behalf of our members employed in education. It was a, it was a case we ran that said, look, this is a workforce that is predominantly women. And because of that, they have been historically underpaid. And it was settled with the department with a very large increase in their base salaries and to, to our satisfaction and our members' satisfaction. Um, with that, as part of that settlement was the introduction of a new position description, or up until then, we didn't really have a position description and it was a, quite a large industrial issue for us. So a Student Learning Support Officer, a general one, in their general work, is required to provide first aid related to this role and administer medications, including activities related to diabetes management, which might include blood glucose measurement, administration of insulin, management of an insulin pump, administration of glycogen, and administration of medication via identified route, including oral, nasal, buccal, eye, ear, gastr- gastronomy button or tube or nasogastric tube. Thank goodness I'm not in the medical field, as I struggle to pronounce most of those words. Um, they are also required to administer medication rectally or via injection in an emergency or as required under a student health plan. Now, a Student Learning Support Officer has minimal training. And that is the level that they're required to operate and probably what would be expected in most workplaces, that someone can administer immediate first aid. The second position that was created out of those negotiations is a-
Mister Rock, can I just ask, is it okay, are we free to go on?
Yep.
Can I, can I just ask, is that a dedicated role?
So that's a Student Learning Support Officer, which there are thousands of across the department. They are either attached to a student or attached to a class or school, um, generally. But usually it's either one or the other, and there are nearly every single school will have a couple of Student Learning Support Officers, traditionally called and in other jurisdictions still called a teacher's aide.
Right.
Um, in their job description, New South Wales, that's among their duties. And so that's that, the diabetes management, first aid, that sort of stuff. And, you know, they generally think, okay, with a bit of training, I feel comfortable at that level. Um.
So is the, is the, just to join the dots very quickly, is, is the, is the problem that you get a situation where these generalists who are a, a legacy from the generalist system are then, so, well, we've got a person with, kid with a disability, you look after them.
Yes. The, uh, well, look, nearly every SLSO is looking after or supporting a child with a disability in class. It's just that level of medical, there's an assessment made when that child's brought into education, as I understand, about what level of support they require medically.
Hmm.
Um, if it's, if it's, if it's general, if it's generic, if it's not too severe, it's obviously an SLSO will suffice. If it is assessed as someone that requires higher needs, they should be appointed what's called an SLSO SHS, Student Health Support. And this is the sort of role those people are performing. Enter or feeding, trache- trachon- tracheostomics suctioning, oral suctioning, clean intermittent catheterisation, support student to undertake clean intermittent catheterisation, diabetes management, administration of medication, ostomy care, seizure management, first aid. What traditionally happened was we had some nurses employed in schools performing those duties. What happens right now is we have a high-level SLSO who is only receiving one day of training every two years to perform those duties as well on children identified. And our members have grave concerns that isn't sufficient.
Sorry, so just that, just to tease that out a bit, so.
Yeah.
The SLSO is the base level, if you like. Then you've got that intermediate one with the extra training and then there's a nurse?
There's no nurses anymore.
Okay, so you, right.
That, and that was going to be my next question. So there's no nurses. So you have people without any medical qualifications doing procedures that if they went wrong, like something like the insulin, for instance, could be fatal.
Yep.
Um, and that is, there's no one else to do that, so that falls to an SLSO.
Yes. And our members feel like they are in a very grey area professionally, legally, and of course in, in, in respect to the child directly, that they are performing functions that they do not feel completely comfortable, trained or qualified to do. Um, and it's a major issue, as, as, as the number of children with disability increase in our schools, the number of children with high medical needs are obviously increasing, correlating as well. So the number of children that require these positions are increasing. And it's a point of rub for us about what level of training these members should receive. And we believe the one day every two years is grossly inadequate. How much they should be doing and whether there should be nurses re-engaged. And how often a person is given that allowance and crea- that position created with children. We believe there are arguments and this regularly comes up through our delegates. And if you want to jump in at any time, Julie, please do. You have more firsthand examples. Um, regularly, it's an issue raised by our delegates that child X should have been afforded an SHS and they weren't. And, you know, it's a budgetary decision or it's an assessment made. And our members are the ones that feel vulnerable as a result of those decisions.
Very much so.
Can I just clarify on that? So if a, if a young person has an NDIS package, should there not be someone coming into the school to assist? Is that not occurring or is it that, um?
The, the, the overlap with the NDIS is, it's complicated. I, I struggle to understand it myself. It tends to be services that aren't related to education. It's things additional extras like speech therapy or occupational therapy. Those people will come into schools. I'm not familiar and happy to take it on notice whether or not sometimes students with NDIS support funding come in to do that stuff. But my understanding is that's why that position exists in the Department of Education is because it falls on education while they're in education.
Okay. The, um, other question I had, it was in relation to your submission, um, and two parts. One is, um, I think it's page two, no, page four, uh, where you've indicated that there's an additional bureaucratic burden placed on schools to ensure that all relevant checks are being made um, uh, on those NDIS providers. I just wanted to tease that out a little bit more. Um, when you say administrative burden, is that, um, paperwork that's required or is it taking them away from teaching roles to assess the person that's coming in?
Thank you for that question, because appreciate that being ported, pointed out. It is something that, so in addition to our members that are SLSOs, we have all the members that are school administration as well. And they are the ones that say they have to pick up that burden. So if a child is introduced into education and they have an NDIS package and they have a couple of external providers that are going to be providing services in the school. Um, our members report that there's an inordinate amount of work that comes with that. There's an assessment for them and working for children checks, safety checks, all those sort of onboarding processes because they're going to be in the school. And then in addition to that, there's also demands on the school about accommodation and facilities and all that sort of stuff. So suddenly the school moves from being just an educational setting because a child with NDIS fundings come in to almost an all-purpose, uh, therapy centre as well for that child. And a lot of schools aren't equipped in an infrastructure sense to be able to accommodate that. So there's, there's twofold. There's the demand on the actual physical building in the schools and also the demand on staff to sort of coordinate those external providers coming through the school as well.
Okay. And my final question before I hand over is in relation to your comments, uh, page two, um, around the, uh, the term inclusive education and, uh, suggestion there needs to be a clearer definition. Um, I'm mindful that in the, um, department's, uh, New South Wales education plan, disability hasn't been mentioned at all. So I'm interested to know, first of all, your concerns that you raise around um, the definition and also whether or not you think, um, uh, disability, um, should be included in the education plan.
Sorry, I'm just refreshing myself.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
Mission, I apologize. Just wondering whether it was addressed in our recommendations. Can I take that on notice and report back to the Committee, do you mind?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask for some clarification around your position on, um, you know, the move towards inclusive education or, or at least a greater, um, degree of inclusive education? Um, what do you think would need to happen before we could get to that point?
Look, I think as we said at our opening comments, the overwhelming, and we have a large delegate structure and they are people from regional and, and remote settings and right across New South Wales. And I think they are very united in the call about, as I indicated earlier, that just to take a pause and a, and a, and assessment where we're at, because I think they feel that they've been part of a process that has moved very fast. There have been a lot of children integrated into, um, uh, mainstream classes, mainstream support classes that would not ordinarily have happened. Um, and it's happened very fast and it's resulted in a lot of work for them, but they also feel it's a very dynamic space and um, it, it, it probably needs a good looking at before further decisions are made. Um, we have members employed as well, obviously, in special purpose schools. So we have both sides of the fence. And I don't think there's one answer among our delegate group as to which is preferable. Um, what they do say is that choices often are furfy. Um, the special purpose schools are more often than not full. And, uh, mainstream support classes are a parent's only option, whether they want it or not. Um, so, yeah, I, I don't know if there's a combined decision about how we're travelling and whether there should be more or less um, children introduced to mainstream support classes. I think it's more of an issue that they're saying the pace of change has been rapid, as it probably should have been, because we had a lot to do as a society as far as our treatment of people with disability and children with disability. But right now they feel like there's a bit of catch-up to be done by the department in a policy sense, particularly in the areas we outlined.
Can I ask when that, when that, your members started noticing the big tick-up in terms of the trend, the transition? What was the timeframe?
If you look, I, I think it's particularly noticeable with those figures, uh, right through those. Every year, it's, it's a real trend that they've noticed. Every single year, there's been a trend that's been increased. Do you, do you have anything that you can observe, Julia, your discussions with?
Look, I don't think I could, we could specifically pinpoint there's a particular year where all of a sudden there's been a high surge of children with disabilities into Department of Education, but there's been a steady increase. And that increase, and as, as Mr. Wright has said, what we see and certainly our members' feedback is certainly the infrastructure hasn't kept pace. Particularly when we're talking mainstream classrooms outside of a dedicated special needs and purpose-built classroom. We've got aging infrastructures where, um, I've got some case examples that just horrify me of what teachers and our members are dealing with in support of children with a disability. But equally within that, where, and as Mr. Wright has said, the supports for both teachers and both students and certainly our members, the training has not kept pace. But the needs of the children and their disabilities have certainly increased and the complexity of those disabilities increased placing greater demand. And we don't feel that there is adequate protection for our members. And I'm sure, I think one of the opening questions with, um, the previous member before yourselves was in regards to expulsion. Now clearly we have many members that are facing challenging issues with dealing with some children with some high complex both physical and mental disabilities that don't only impact upon that particular child, but the whole setting of where that child is with school. And then the injuries when Mr. Wright has mentioned, the workers' compensation claims for twenty-one, twenty-two has increased thirty-four percent. That, that has to be taken into consideration. So I think.
Sounds like it's a function of the NDIS not to take up, um, Natasha's point. Um, not keeping up with the, the move away from the home or the institutional setting into education and the NDIS not kind of appreciating that integration and that transition.
The, the supports, we understand that are provided to a child with NDIS funding in education are nothing to do with education, they're top-ups. And like I said, they often put more of a demand on the school setting because you've got people coming and going and interfacing and in and out. And, uh, uh, then, then actually assisting the educational stuff. That still falls wholly and solely on the department. And, yeah, there is a, uh, enormous pressure there where, yeah, children are coming in with a, a, a height. The, not just the number of children, the complexity of needs and, um, that's what our members mean, but just.
And has there been a dialogue, a formal dialogue between the department and the union on this issue?
All the time, all the time, um, relentlessly. Um, I can't say we've had satisfaction particularly on the, um, position description issue and the amount of training someone should receive for the SHS issue I outlined. We're still pushing that and we're still in constant. We've been in negotiations about that for years. Um, but we are constantly talking to the department about these issues.
I'm just going to hand over to Mrs. Mitchell, um, and give her the opportunity if she wants. Um, she doesn't have to, I know she's having trouble with, um, internet.
No, I'm fine. I've, 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 I've got power back chair, so I'm good. But I, um, Natasha covered the areas that I wanted to, so I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you though. Thank you to the witnesses and for your submission.
Um, were there further questions, Mr. Buttergig?
Well, well, I mean, in a nutshell, it sounds like there's cost shifting is too strong a word, but it's like the department's had to deal with this new view of the world, which is, I'm totally understandable. As you pointed out, society's moved on, which is a good thing. But, uh, clearly, the funding mechanism has to be looked at. And you would have thought that the NDIS was the logical, but I guess that's a conversation the Minister's probably going to have with her federal counterparts and, yeah.
I think the, the industrial landscape is a demonstration of that thinking, I think. Um, up until this year, when permanency was finally granted to our members, we had an untenable situation where the department said, you know, a child with disability, you might, you might be attached as an SLSO to a one child. That child's going to graduate one day, so therefore we can never make you permanent. Common sense tells you there will now always be another child with disability moving into the system at some point. And there's going to be ongoing work. And, um, we had a real workforce crisis as a result of that. But that shortsightedness about attaching workers to individuals rather than going, we need a pool of people that are SLSOs that are trained and qualified and can work among children and different children, rather than go, Mister Buttergig, you're attached to Joe and when Joe graduates, you're out. And, you know, I would go to conferences and we had people that were all ten, fifteen, twenty years, term-by-term engagement. Um, and that made a very diff- and, and what does that do to a psyche of the workforce? And that made a very diff, what does that do to a psyche of the workforce? You know, they cease feeling professional, they are temporary caregivers. And they're not, these people are very professional. Having worked and met with many of them and had the pleasure of representing them, they are very, very qualified individuals, passionate about their work and very good at their work. And the permanency move has been gratefully received by them because it acknowledges them in that way. And that's part of the thinking the department needs to be engaged on. And that this is going to be an ongoing role for the department. It's not something you dip in and dip out of.
And if I may, Mr. Buttergig, and I think Mr. Wright has touched on it very well there, the security in the conversion that was achieved on the 8,000 of our members that were converted just recently, so, you know, for 2023's Christmas, many of those went in with certainty coming into 2024 term one, was hugely welcomed. Equally within that, our members in the SLSOs, and as Mr. Wright has mentioned, those that are doing the plans in taking on new providers that are coming in and making sure that all those compliance checks, you know, when somebody come onto school campus that shouldn't be there. Every one of those from front gate to our general assistants that support children across the classroom network are dedicated. They are professional, they should be given that recognition. But equally as the comments from the previous panel member, they are exhausted. They know that there is things that can be done to support and provide better care, but we simply don't have that resources or a true willingness to sit down and sort these issues out. When we're speaking to the issue of the student health support, that is very, very complex care. I dealt with that in my previous role in home care and I know how complex and how challenging taking on that care of a child, alone, an adult. So the care and trust that they give to those students, they give to those parents cannot be undervalued. And I think that, you know, we certainly thank you for being able to highlight what our members do every day of the school term in support of having children, being included, to have an education, to go out and, you know, perform as we do in society is just so invaluable and can't be taken away as to the value and their worth.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's all that we have time for. This has been an incredibly valuable session. Thank you very much and thank you for your submission. To the extent there are questions, supplementary questions or questions taken on notice, we'll be in touch. But that concludes this particular session. We will, we are running a bit behind, but let's have a short break until 10 to 4. And we'll be back with our final panel of witnesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good. We are broadcasting. I now welcome our next witnesses who are joining us via Webex online today. I hope that the tech is working for you. If I could ask each of you to please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation, and I'll start with you, Ms Moore.
Okay. My name's Nadine Moore and I'm a board member of Disability Advocacy in New South Wales. And speaking as a parent today, my affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Dr, I'm going to get this wrong, Belosis?
Thank you. My name is Sherry Belosis and I'm the Policy and Communications Lead at Disability Advocacy. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much to both of you, both for your submission and for attending today. Do you have a short opening statement that you'd like to make?
We do. May I ask that both of us have an opportunity to do an opening statement? They're both quite brief.
Yes, no worries. Go ahead.
Right. Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Disability Advocacy, henceforth described as DA, provides individual advocacy to two thirds of New South Wales, making it the largest individual advocacy provider in the state. We provide individual advocacy to anyone experiencing unfair treatment within service systems. And as part of this, we work with families and students who are experiencing unfair treatment within the education system. Our systemic advocacy draws on this coalface information and we consult with parents, advocates, teachers and principals and education staff and the sector more broadly. In 2022, we published the report on education entitled Falling Behind: A Need for Inclusive Education, which was co-authored with Family Advocacy. Now, this report highlights barriers and issues with attempting to gain inclusive education through adjustments. And what this report and what we have found consistently in our advocacy work is that students with disability in the education system are often let down. The reason for this is because there is a lack of resources. Often it stems from a lack of time for education staff, a lack of financial resources, sometimes skills and training, and sometimes just a lack of willingness from education staff to provide reasonable adjustments. Consequently, we see that many students are unfairly excluded from mainstream settings. We know that research points to students with disability being overrepresented in suspensions and expulsions. We see the use of restrictive practices, exclusions and seclusion. And we also see enforced part-time attendance. And we also see a lack of meaningful adjustments, which does not lead to meaningful participation in classroom settings, which Nadine will speak to shortly. It is a system in our view that is buckling under pressure. And I echo the words of Mr Troy Wright in the witness who gave evidence prior to this panel. For the reasons that I've just described, many parents see a value in having specialised schooling, particularly those with high and complex needs. While we believe and support inclusive education, let's get these issues that we're seeing addressed first before we abolish choice. This means eliminating and reducing suspensions and expulsions where possible. It means reducing restrictive practices. It also means asking schools to provide reports and data on educational outcomes and also addressing the teacher shortage that we're seeing at the moment and the lack of resources. Only when these issues are fully realised can we consider moving towards the phasing out of segregated and special schools. Do you want to go, Nadine?
Oh, okay. So I've already introduced myself. My name's Nadine Moore. And among my many hats, I'm a mother to three wonderful children. My eldest son Liam is 18 years old and finished formal education in year 12 at the end of last year in 2023. Liam has had a brain injury from birth requiring many brain and spine surgeries and long hospitalisations. Liam's disabilities affects both his intellectual and physical function and he requires assistance in most aspects of daily life. Because of the nature of Liam's disabilities, we found navigating the education system extremely difficult, especially in our regional area. Liam attended both private and public schools in an effort to best accommodate his additional needs. We were lucky as a family that we had the resources to do this, as many families don't. Though now, at the end of Liam's 12 years of schooling, I can quite categorically say that I don't believe Liam actually received an education at all, despite my best and continued efforts to make this happen for him. I think I feel like most parents of children with a disability, that I failed to give my child an education, a right that is afforded to his siblings who don't have a disability. Apparently, the disability standards in education, in conjunction with the legislation and the act, are word perfect. The policies and procedures outline, read beautifully on paper, but fail to deliver on the ground for students with a disability in a monumental way. Each school does disability differently, and most that I've experienced do it very badly. There is no consistency across schools and educational facilities and no oversight of such. As the care of a child whom most would consider easy in terms of his disability, meaning the level of adjustments needed are just superficial, I fought for my son to be included in mainstream education for 10 years. My son was finally given an aid and admitted to mainstream full-time in year 11 at high school, where he thrived and achieved way beyond what his teachers ever thought possible, given his level of disability. This was the first year in all his schooling that Liam was given age and curriculum-specific work. Prior to this, in the support unit, Liam completed work equivalent to a third and fourth grader because group class work was tailored to the child in the class with the least ability. And for those that aren't aware, support units include children from year seven to year 12, encompassing ages from 11 to 18 years, making content and age-specific learning extremely difficult. My 16-year-old son was given Disney's The Lion King movie to watch the animation and talk about when Liam can read and was more than capable of reading the appropriate Year 10 New South Wales English curriculum novel. It is with huge sadness that I reflect on 12 years of my son's education and all the opportunities my son missed out on as a child with disabilities and so different from experiences my non-disabled children are currently having at their school. Because education is a lot more than just learning the curriculum. Liam never went on a school camp, never participated in a drama or art exhibition, was never included in career exposure work experience, didn't have friends or friendship supports, was made to sit out of assemblies in school communities and group activities. One teacher's idea of reasonable adjustment in a multimedia class was to send Liam out of the classroom for six weeks to complete the project on his own. All the while, marking him technically present in his class. Like so many school teacher decisions made around reasonable adjustment, this only set my son up for failure and further isolation when he couldn't complete the task without direct support. Sadly, I'm not alone in this educational struggle with my child with disabilities. The level of suspensions and expulsions for kids with disabilities, the definition and interpretation around reasonable adjustments, the demarcation of educational responsibilities versus private, medical and NDIS responsibilities, the lack of support and consultation with parents and the lack of governance oversight within the Department of Education around disability is truly alarming. Whilst I'm sure that everyone has the best intentions for all kids attending school to learn and to be included, that is, my experience within the DOE with kids with disabilities and their parents has been one of severe distress, unfairness, inflexibility and harm. Whilst as a parent, I am really heartened by the recent findings of the Disability World Commission regarding inclusive education,
Before we can even begin to look at making these bigger leaps. Thank you for your time.
Um, thank you very much. Um, I'm just gonna check because Mrs Mitchell didn't get a chance to ask in the last couple of panels, just whether she wanted to kick off the questioning.
Thank you Chair, I'm happy to. Um, thank you both for appearing and also for the submission. Um, I might just start with you Ms Moore, thank you for telling us about Liam and, and your experience. I don't think there would be anyone better placed than to tell us in terms of improvements, and it does kind of pick up a little bit what was in the submission. So Dr Baylosis, if you want to comment as well, that's fine. But one thing that I noticed was that you talked about particularly around reasonable adjustments and the complaint mechanism process within DOE, that it is all quite circular in terms of how that works. Um, and obviously don't share anything personally that, that you're not comfortable with. But I guess as kind of apparent advocate, where do you see improvements in that space that need to be made? And you know, if you were, if you were in charge and you could change something immediately, what would you pick as the main priority?
I actually think that parents need support. Parents need support before it becomes a catastrophe. And, and that's typically what happens. What's been outlined in, in the report that Cherry worked on and unsure by a hundred other people is the circular argument that goes around and around when you put in a complaint with the Department of Education. So you can complain in two ways, you can put in a complaint online or you can ring and make a complaint. Or if you, if you put in a complaint in online, at least your complaint is actually registered and it actually has a file number. If you just ring or write to the school, there's no evidence that you've actually made a complaint. This complaint then goes to the district office and the district office sends it straight back to the people that you're actually complaining about.
Hmm.
There's no way of getting around that. It just goes around and around and around in a loop. Um, there's no independent oversight. There's no independent person that can actually say, hey, can you look at this complaint? It's valid, what this parent has to say is valid. Uh, we don't have a say in the education of our children or what they consider reasonable adjustments or EPs. As I said in my speech, in, in my regional area, I've found that schools do it very, very differently. There's no consistency across the schools about how they handle children with a disability. And some do little bits and pieces of it, other people don't do it at all, and some people do it quite well. But the complaints process is the same.
Hmm, and we've heard other evidence about that inconsistency. Uh, this morning, a lot depends on individual educators and principals and then a family's experience can be vastly different.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Um, the, the, and maybe this is one for you, Dr Baylosis, but the, you, you did call up um, some sort of independent process around complaints. And it's fine if you haven't, but have you given any thought to where you think that role should be placed? Should it cover all school sectors? Um, I guess I'm just trying to think about how it could function in practice if we were to make a recommendation along those lines.
I might um, offer a perspective here. I think before it even escalates to the need to look outside of the school, a practical step could be involving an advocacy organisation as soon as there is a dispute. Often what our advocates find is that in those initial phases, before conflict becomes unmanageable, very difficult to resolve and people or both parties become, I guess, quite steadfast in their positions, having an advocate step in to support parents. As Nadine pointed out, support for parents is, is really important to assist them in communicating their needs with the school. That can be immensely useful. Um, but if that is not resolved, then a independent body outside of the Department of Education would be useful. Uh, so it's not the Department of Education investigating itself. Uh, certainly at the director level, that could also be looked at as well. We often find that, you know, directors have usually a close working relationship with the principals in their area as well. Uh, so it's quite hard to get a meaningful resolution for parents, that is, uh, when they do follow that complaints mechanism.
Hmm, Chair, could I just ask one more question? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, and that, it, it kind of segues into, um, when you're just talking about that involvement, I guess, of advocacy organisations at an earlier stage. Your submission was very strong in terms of preventing the high rate of suspensions and expulsions that we see and that overrepresentation, particularly for students with disability. Do you think that there's somewhere in that space for better advocacy, whether it is with external organisations? Um, you know, obviously there's been some changes recently to the, the policies. And I've certainly had, um, you know, parent advocacy groups concerned about what the impact of that will be, reach out to me. But, um, do, do you think that there is maybe a gap there in terms of having better advocacy for those students and those families before it reaches a disciplinary approach?
Hmm, um, can you define what you mean by better advocacy?
Well, just, just, I guess, um, do you, uh, do you think there's a gap in terms of? Because I, and again, it's very individual, but certainly some of the feedback that I've had um, from families is around, you know, they, there's an overrepresentation of students um, who do have disability in the suspension and the expulsion statistics. Um, sometimes, you know, and I think your report called out of, um, your submission called out of a, a young person who'd been suspended, I think it was seven times. And so I'm just wondering, is it that parents feel that there's a gap in terms of, you know, um, putting their case forward on behalf of their child? Is there a bit in terms of schools needing the resources and how they sort of manage um, students who do have, have sort of behavioural challenges? Or like, I know that it's complex, but I guess just is there a gap that you see in terms of whether it's department staff or, or parent advocates or someone who can help with those situations before they escalate?
Sure, okay, I think, I think that there's perhaps a differentiation here between the, the parent providing advocacy and then a professional advocacy.
Yeah, yeah.
What we find is that there's communication breakdown and understandably so. Parents are often frustrated, immensely frustrated and upset. And that can create tensions and, uh, it can certainly contribute to conflict escalating. Uh, where education staff who are stressed, uh, need to try and communicate with a parent who is also distressed. And that can just make communication between both parties. It can create a barrier between both parties. So having a professional advocate step in to support that parent, communicate, uh, and to also advocate for their, their child's needs and to also support the school in understanding what they could be doing, uh, is useful as well. I think just having a, an advocate to speak with and support that communication process can be really useful. Uh, what we often find however, is that it, parents often are not sure that they can reach out to advocacy organisations.
Yeah.
Uh, and often schools don't know either. So we're certainly doing a bit of work in our regions to promote advocacy. Uh, and what we're finding is that schools often have a misperception of advocates coming in and being adversarial as well. So there are a few barriers that, that, that can prevent advocacy from happening. Uh, one is a, a lack of knowledge, a lack of referral. Uh, and if we can overcome those barriers and have advocacy in those initial phases, it could be quite useful.
Did you want to add anything, Ms Moore? It's fine if not, I just didn't know if you would.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think I would, I would. Uh, my son's been suspended from school twice. He has never had behavioural issues at all. He was suspended for what I consider a disability related issue. He touched his teacher on the cheek. And obviously the rule is that there can't be any body contact at all. He moved his teacher's, his aide's head towards him and said to her, you're not listening to me. And then he was taken out of the class, suspended, grilled without anybody with him.
Hmm.
And he was scared and frightened. And when I met up with him in the afternoon, he said to me, they told me I assaulted a teacher. And I fought that suspension because he, he doesn't have a history of ever being violent or ever touching anybody. And it was pure frustration at him being in a position where his needs just weren't being met and hadn't been set up properly, even though I'd gone to extreme, I felt extreme lengths to make sure that that had happened.
Hmm.
Um, but the teachers, I, I always felt with Liam that the, it was, it, I don't think there's any understanding of disability behaviour. And there's no, there's just no empathy, I guess, for people's levels of frustration and anxiety and what that actually looks like in a person with a disability. Um, and I just found the whole process just ridiculous. You know, they wanted him, you know, a child with a receptive and, and expressive language disorder and an intellectual disability, they wanted him to sign this huge contract and talk about his behaviour. And he didn't know what he'd done wrong. All he knew was that he'd been told that he assaulted them. And that's, that wasn't okay with me. You know, the school didn't call me before they, they interviewed him. And to me, that also wasn't appropriate because then he agreed, he actually signed a document to say that he had assaulted a teacher because they told him to. So there was no support for Liam as a kid with a disability in that process. And there was no support for me coming in at the end of it to try and fix it and not make it such a big deal for him. Because he was devastated and didn't understand what he had done. And, you know, look, I get that teachers aren't necessarily trained in disability, but that was, to me, such a minor thing that was totally disability, because of his disability. He wouldn't have done that if he was a, you know, a neurotypical child. Um, and, and, you know, it, it's a blanket rule. If you touch somebody or you hit somebody or you strike somebody, it's an automatic suspension. There's no, there's no leeway or room there at all. Um, and you know, that goes on his record, that affects his assisted transport. It affects, you know, further government funding for him when he's in group situations. It has longer term effects and I don't think people actually realise that.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I, um, thank you. Can I ask, what are the things that you bring out in your submission? Um, is this, and I guess we've heard a lot about it already today, but there appears to be, you know, some teachers and some schools who are just brilliant. And, um, we have, and I know myself, you know, being within the, the disability community, there are particular schools that are identified as, as just being really great if you can get your kids into, if they're, if they're a child with disability. Um, and then there are other experiences where even the most, you know, benign kind of reasonable adjustment, uh, is refused. You say in your, at the top of your, um, of page six of your submission, that there are, um, some schools that refuse to provide adjustments. You say research indicates that it's the teaching staff and culture within a given school that can largely determine. Um, so I guess, can you give me a bit more explanation as to, as to what sort of cultural features you're seeing in those schools that aren't providing adjustments? Is there more that you can sort of tell us about that?
Sure, yeah. In terms of culture, it is often the implicit values, uh, which I think can be hard to pinpoint. But it's shown through the willingness of the teaching staff. And often it's mainly influenced by the principal and assistant, uh, deputing principal. Um, I, there is a, a fair bit of enabling in terms of our current systems that allow a level of discernment around what is reasonable, uh, or what's perceived as reasonable. If a principal does not understand disability, and in particular, we see this with invisible disabilities such as psychosocial disability, there is a risk that challenging behaviours are misunderstood as naughty behaviours instead of being symptomatic of a disability or distress. And then it's managed from a more punitive disciplinary action rather than a willingness to integrate supports. Uh, and again, we believe, and what research points to is, it is because the, the knowledge, the biases that exist within educational staffs.
What can we do proactively to address that then? What, you know, we talk a lot about, and I think you make this point as well, that, you know, obviously we need greater resources in the school system. But is there some immediate step we could take now that could relieve some of that from those, those schools that have the resources but are still not providing the adjustments?
At the very least, as a minor step forward, minimum training in disability and trauma-informed training as well. Uh, while also noting the diversity and breadth of disability, having a basic understanding that often behaviours can be symptomatic of distress, discomfort, uh, and not all students and children learn the same way. And the current system that we have really is quite rigid in catering to the different types of styles of learning of students, particularly those with disability. Um, Nadine can speak to an example of her son who needs to move around, uh, when he's studying and, and it can often look like he's distracted. Sorry Nadine, I'll, I'll let you speak to this.
No, that's okay.
Um, but that, you know, that's a good example of, um, the school not understanding what that behaviour was. Nadine, I'll, I'll let you take over at this point.
Yeah, so, um, my, as I said, my son has a brain injury. And one of the ways that Liam actually learns is he has to be moving. And that's also very common with kids with ASD. So he looks like he's not taking anything in and he may have to pace up and down the back of the school. What I, what I actually did was I got rubber bands for the back of his chair so he could actually move his legs up and down without actually leaving his chair. Um, but once again, I had to instigate that. Um, but, you know, the teacher would say, you know, he's not listening, he's not listening, he should go out. And I sort of said to him, to the, you know, to these teachers, when he's actually sitting there looking like he's paying attention, that's when he's not listening. So, you know, you ask him a question while he's pacing to see if he's learning. And they were actually really stunned about that. And I think it's, it's one of those situations where the parents actually know their children best. And they, and the, the changes that I've seen in our regional area, Cherry, with systemic change in the school, has actually begun with parents just like myself going in and really making an effort with teachers to say, this doesn't have to be so hard and so scary, you know, that we just, we, we all want the same thing. We're all on the same side. Um, we all just want good outcomes for our children. Uh, let us help you, you know, let us tell you what our children need. Um, and that generally doesn't happen at all in schools. And I would really like to see, you know, for 12 years I stood on the sidelines going, you know, pick me, pick me, I, I want to help you, who, who can I pay, what can I do, what can I organise? And nobody ever took me up on anything. And, you know, I get, you know, it's not like we're trying to tell teachers how to do their jobs. We're trying to make their job easier. And, and the flow on from that is that everyone has a better time. You know, the kids, the mainstream kids learn better when there's not as many distractions with kids with disabilities. And then the, the kids with disabilities feel more included in their school environment. It's a win-win situation.
Hmm.
Yeah.
May I just add, just hearing Nadine speak, that families, parents and people with disability are immensely resourceful, just hearing of her example. And back to the question that was being asked, what are some additional measures that could be implemented in, in the short term? Uh, perhaps ensuring that parents are better consulted. Uh, and that is a, a prerequisite for, for schools or a guideline that schools really follow to meet with parents regularly. Uh, not just about their child as well, uh, but perhaps as a, a collective uh, to talk about some of the very simple measures, like in Nadine's instance, uh, that could be integrated to make, um, classroom life easier for both the student and teachers.
Uh, Mr Buttergeek, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I think just, I just quickly, um, so from, from the previous evidence we heard, it looks as though there's this structural problem where there's general agreement on that ultimately everyone would be better served by an integration model. Obviously nuanced in a sort of a horses for courses approach. But I think there's, seems to be general agreement that integration is a good thing. But the government hasn't really caught up with the implications of that. And because it's still largely a function of the education system or the department's responsibility, a whole of government approach hasn't been brought to bear on this. So that the Department of Health is not really looking at it at a state level and the NDIS is not really catered for it at a federal level. Would that be, um, a fair enough summary from your perspective on the long-term structural problem?
I'm not sure I can confidently answer it with, with that summary. I think it's a lot more complexed and nuanced. Um, I think as, uh, Nadine has pointed out and as our submission highlights, there are, this is a significant reform. Um, certainly looking at the interplay with other service systems, health, the NDIS is needed. Alongside that, there are other issues that we need to address. So as I mentioned earlier on, the, the teaching, the teacher shortage. Um, there is a teacher crisis and we know that university enrolments are down in, uh, teaching degrees. Uh, and on top of that, specialist, uh, disability education, teaching staff as well. Uh, there is, there is a shortage there. Uh, and looking at the systemic issues, particularly for families in regional rural and remote areas and the barriers, uh, that students have with accessing school, uh, in those areas as well. Um, and also just thinking through, uh, what other witnesses have said today, the, the lack of resources in the education system, that really needs to be addressed. And where that exists, uh, I, I can't say, but it, uh, I guess what most of us would agree is that those service systems that we've pointed to, uh, the NDIS, health and education need to work cohesively, cohesively if this is going to work.
Yep, thanks.
Um, given your broader jurisdictional overview, um, are there any jurisdictions in Australia that, that do this better? That provide a, a more inclusive, um, education system that we could take sort of, you know, guidance from?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough to, to point to another jurisdiction to confidently answer that question.
That's okay, I thought I'd give it a try. Um, it's completely okay. Um, I'll just check if, um, if Mrs Mitchell or anyone else has any further questions. Nope.
Nope, mine have been covered.
Okay. Um, I think that probably brings us to an end. I will just ask if there's anything else that you think, um, from your submission or, um, from your opening statement that you'd like us to?
I, I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
One more chair, if I, I'll actually make two, just in time. Um.
Nope, seem to be having internet issues. Do you want to try turning off your camera, Sarah, and just using voice, see if that helps?
Sorry, was that me? Was, did I have a delay?
Yeah, you, you've got a terrible reception at the moment. Do you want to try turning off your video?
Can you hear me or not? Don't know if I've lost you.
You can hear me.
Don't worry about it.
No? Okay.
Yeah, is that better?
Oh yeah, that's better.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, I'll just put them on notice.
All right. No worries. So yes, was there anything else that, um, that you think that we should have highlighted?
I have done that, sorry. If you can't hear me, I can leave it, it's fine Chair, it, it wasn't.
I, I think there's also a delay.
Sorry. Oh dear. Okay, can you hear me? I just wanted to ask about education outcomes, but I can leave it if my technology isn't working.
You've just got a, a very.
Well, just leave it, just leave it.
All right, it's a very uncomfortable delay. Okay, um, I think, um, on that basis then, um, that probably brings us to an end for today's, um, session. Um, I'm sorry, I did ask you the question before and I'm not sure that you got a chance to answer it. Was there anything else, um, that you wanted to raise?
No, I, I covered everything that I'd like to speak about. Nadine?
I think the only thing that I would confidently say is that I really believe that we need to look at education as an environment rather than as just a curriculum. Um, I'm not sure how all of this is going to look in 20 or 30 years or 40, 50 years. But there's so many issues around, um, you know, inclusive education. And I think, I think that actually begins with the definition of what education is. And as a society, I think we need to, because education looks different for everybody, especially with kids with disabilities. Um, and yeah, I, I would like to see sort of a broader brush with education rather than just a curriculum moving forward. Hmm, yeah.
May I, may I just, um, I, I have a few thoughts that I'd like to share as well before we conclude?
Go ahead.
Um, there is a saying in the policy world that a policy only is effective as its implementation. And if we are going to move towards an integrated approach, uh, then we just need to ensure that these issues that have been highlighted throughout today's inquiry are addressed. Uh, because there are concerns that hastily implemented policy will amplify the issues that we're currently seeing and it will leave families and students with disability without a choice.
I think that's a, an excellent, um, note. And I, I can't help myself but ask just one more question. Because I think on that, you know, there are those who are advocating for the government um, to set a date for ending inclusive, sorry, ending segregated education and moving towards inclusive education in order to then sort of incentivise, I guess, the process of getting to that point. Do you think that we are at a point where we can make such a plan? Or are things still, um, in need of such a significant resource and a bit of time to allow more teachers to come on and all the rest of it before we could actually plot out, um, a proper plan? What's your thought on that?
There are two streams of thought here. So it's interesting, family advocacy and disability advocacy, when we co-authored that report, we didn't agree on the closure of segregated schooling. And we thought, how do we negotiate this? And ultimately, we hope that the New South Wales Government and the Australian Government will consult just like today. Uh, to answer your question, I think that there's two, there's two streams of thought here. And one is if you keep, keep on building segregated schooling, it's a disincentive. That, and exclusion and, um, a lack of participation will continue. And the other school of thought, which is where we are positioned, is that this may lead to further exclusion because what we're seeing at the moment isn't working. We're seeing a broken system that is buckling under pressure. And even though there is legislation in place, schools are really struggling to even meet this. So while we can have stages to incentivise, let's make sure that we take a measured, conscious approach before moving into the next phase. Because as, as we mentioned before, some schools are doing it really well, some schools aren't. And so if we put time-bound pressures, that can amplify issues with those schools that aren't doing so well. So let's create the time and space needed to create a good standard, better than good standard actually, um, across the, across the education system first.
Thank you. Um, well, that does bring us to the end of our session. Um, thank you so much, um, for your attendance. This has been a very useful session. Um, the Secretaryate will be in touch in relation to questions, uh, supplementary questions and the timeframe to provide answers. But, um, that concludes our hearing for today. I just wanted to give one, um, special thanks to our Auslan interpreters who have been doing a fantastic, um, job for us today. Thank you very much. Um, and that concludes today. Um, and we will be back, I think next month is the next, um, hearing for this inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.